The December Commissioner meeting will now come to order. If you will stand and join Vice Chairman Langley as he does our invocation, and I will do our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. In honor of God our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble here one more time. Father, we also acknowledge that you have allowed us to meet here together 12 consecutive months, and we thank you for that. Father, we also say a special prayer for all those who lost lives or loved ones on Pearl Harbor Day. Now, Father, we just pray in the name of Jesus, leading guide us in our decision-making for your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never diming, and just as for all.
I would like to ask if any Commissioner has any conflict of interest of anything that's on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. I... You got some?
Yeah. On page three, item Y, I'm gonna, I need to pull that.
And a motion to amend the agenda?
Subnew.
Which one is it? Y, on the third page.
Subnew.
Is second? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you, Katie. We're down to Mr. Langley, now your meeting.
Thank you. Certainly at this time, we want to acknowledge our outgoing Chairman. We are grateful and thankful for his years of service, his calm spirit, and his willingness to do what is right for the people of Beaufort County. And so I'd like to present you with this plaque, which reads as follows. Presented to Commissioner Jerry Evans in grateful appreciation for his devoted leadership and dedicated public service to the citizens of Beaufort County from the years of 2016 to 2020. One final word, I want to say truly it's been an honor to serve the people of Beaufort County for the last four years, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Now go to swear in the elected and re-elected officials. If you'd like to have your family or whoever you're gonna have hold your vitals, come on up. And does anybody need one? Okay. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of state, of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner? So help you God. Congratulations, John. At this time, I will take nominations for Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Frankie Waters for Chairman.
I would like to nominate Stan DeFerich for Chairman.
I'll now take nominations for Vice Chairman.
I'm a clerk. I'm gonna give Jerry Langley.
Katie. The Republican Caucus met as advertised, and not only did we decide to put me up for Chairman, we decided to put Randy Walker up for Vice Chairman. So, understanding that, I nominate Randy Walker.
All those in favor for Commissioner Langley as Vice Chairman, please raise your hand. All those for Commissioner Walker?
The caucus is broken.
Well, there was not enough Republicans on this board. Please like to me, not enough Republicans.
Mr. Chairman, you may now assign seats as you like.
Okay. At this time, Randy, you're gonna take the place of Stan. And Stan, you move everywhere hood is. Hood, you move to John. And John, you move up here.
He's gonna take me.
Stay on the hood.
Stan, is this your, is this your capable board?
Uh, yeah, I'll get it.
Sorry, man.
Yeah, that's good.
Get back.
Katie, are you gonna handle item number F?
Mr. Flight Salter is to be sworn in as tax assessor as of January 1st, and we're going to be doing that swearing-in this evening. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of your knowledge and ability, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as tax assessor, and that you will not allow your actions as assessor to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations to help you, God. Congratulations.
Yes. I have a question, a point of order. Just, what we're swearing to is different language than we have sworn to this past.
Yes, sir.
I have an objection to this language.
It's the constitutional, it's the statutory language that's required to be sworn to by an assessor.
No, if that was for an assessor, the part that I have a problem with is you're saying that whatever powers and authority may be established supporting the Constitution, that is very subject to a whole lot of corruption. So, where did this, where did this oath come from?
The school of government.
The school of government?
Yes, sir.
Well, what happened to the oath of...
Commissioner, there are actually two. There's the constitutional oath, and then there's the statutory oath. And what is, what the school of government recommends and what they have done for all Council of State members is it's a combination of the two so that you make sure you do that, or you're supposed to take both oaths.
Well, there's a problem with that particular oath. I'm not going to dwell on this, but that is an oath that is subject to forcing public officials to corrupt the Constitution of the United States of America, and that is not the end.
This time, we're down to item number G, public comments. And the first one we have is Stacy. And if you will, the ones that are doing the public comment, if you'll clean the area with that wipe after you finish.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. I'm here to briefly mention background on Wi-Fi and broadband emission standards, as well as health effects of non-ionizing wireless radiation, specifically 5G, as it relates to the county's move to make Beaufort County a high-speed internet hub. While the benefits of 5G technology are few, the dangers are many. The difference in internet speed between 4 and 5G is measured in milliseconds and is negligible to the consumer. Meanwhile, the impacts of radiation damage to humans are lasting, and in the case of DNA damage, permanent. FCC standards for wireless radiation have not gone up commensurate with the latest technology. Yes, you heard that right. Unfortunately, the latest safety standards from the FCC are already 24 years old and are outdated. The FCC itself has admitted that it does not see a need to update its electromagnetic or radio frequency standards. In fact, there's a lawsuit from Environmental Health Trust Agency, a think tank, along with Children's Health Defense Fund, as well as individuals, against the FCC for this very reason. The lawsuit is aimed at getting the FCC to reconsider, revise, and update its 24-year-old exposure limits for radio frequency radiation from cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi networks, smart meters, and other wireless communication devices and facilities. Hundreds of scientists and medical professionals have submitted peer-reviewed studies showing the consensus of the scientific community that RFR is deeply harmful to people and the environment, and is linked to cancer, reproductive harm, memory loss, DNA damage, and other biologic ills to humans, animals, and plants. Notwithstanding this well-documented record, the FCC has released an order on December 2019 deciding that nothing would be done to update its standards and maintaining the antiquated exposure limits that are still ongoing now. In so doing, the FCC has violated the Administrative Procedure Act because its order is arbitrary and capricious rather than evidence-based. It has violated the National Environmental Policy Act, which requires an organization take a hard look at the environmental and health impacts of their decisions. And it has also violated the 1996 Telecommunications Act because the FCC failed, as required by the TCA, to consider the health impact of its decision upon public health. With this in mind, we are asking the county Commissioners to pick up the mantle where the FCC has not, to do the requisite due diligence in protecting the health of the citizens of Beaufort County by thoroughly examining the research regarding non-ionizing radiation in general and 5G radiation in particular before moving forward with any high-speed internet rollout or changes to internet service in Beaufort County. We also recommend fiber optics as a viable, safer, and more secure alternative to wireless. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlton? Carlton? Okay. Barbara? Thank you for doing that, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Can you out here with a mask or no? Okay. I would first like to apologize to the Commissioners due to my statement on the last meeting. I do like to show respect where it is due, but also in regards to being in order, if people who call themselves leaders cannot follow their own rules, then how are they truly leading? What is their effectiveness? Or are you sitting in a seat taking up space? I say this because I've watched these meetings, and I'm not seeing things move forward in Beaufort County, but I do see an increase in stepping back into history. If you have been in a seat for years on top of years, yet there is no change, then congratulations. You are taking up space, and you are part of the lack of growth here in this community. I've watched on several occasions where a non-person of color has been stopped by Beaufort County sheriffs with only one officer attending. This does not occur with people of color. When we're stopped, it's at least two or more officers. There is currently an influx of people overdosing from drugs. Several of those recent overdoses occurred during, due to fentanyl being brought in. This is also occurring in surrounding areas. So why doesn't the sheriff carry Narcan? There's been an influx of suicides. Why aren't officers taking training for suicide intervention? There's a huge need for mental health services to the point that I've taken it upon myself to work with the National Alliance on Mental Illness to ensure that people of this community are getting the services and support that they need by becoming an affiliate for the county. On August 7th, Mr. Keys was slammed to the ground and bruised by Beaufort County sheriffs over false charges, and you Commissioners demanded that he be fired. Yet you had a meeting about adding more officers. Shame on you. This was a 71-year-old man who has been working at the trash site for 20-plus years. So this is the way you treat your elders? Well, Mr. Commissioners, have you checked to see that there was no police report provided? And if Mr. Keys was considered a threat, but he was able to find himself out of the jail? A call was received by Ms. Polk's cellphone to an officer. He responded and brought friends. Did you know that four officers responded, but only two are listed on court documents? Why is this? How can the sheriff's office be trusted if the information going to court is not factual and complete? Then a witness says that Coleman refused to speak to him. The Social Coalition for Social Justice 2020 states that here in Beaufort County, there is a school population of 6,444 students, and out of that, 43.4% of all juvenile delinquency complaints were school-related. Black students make 31.9%, and yet were two times more likely than whites to receive short-term suspension. Yet you talk about adding more officers to add to these students, to add these students to the school-to-prison pipeline. You all can't even make the sheriff do anything you want him to do. Yet you expect the public to feel safe about having them around our children? Beaufort County Jail, lastly, is a pre-trial detention facility where not everyone has been proven guilty, which is their right by law to be innocent until proven guilty. Yet they are given poor food, no recreation, safety, security, et cetera. And according to the grand jury reports and the National Institute of Justice, this information was verified for the times that the sheriff was allowed to, that the sheriff has allowed them to come out. But now he won't answer calls. So what are you all doing? Who is gonna be held accountable and forced to accept responsibility? I keep going back to the Joey and Lou.
Your time's up, Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would, wipe that off. Thank you. Item number H, legislative updates, is Keith Kidwell. Has anybody seen Keith? I've not seen him. Okay. Item number I is items for consent. Got a motion to approve. Is there a second? A second. All those in favor, say aye, or say aye. Raise your right hand. Those opposed? Item number J, items for presentation. The first one is the COVID-19 update by James Mattson. He's in the back. He's coming. Good evening.
Hey, good morning, or afternoon, or good evening. I'll try to be quick about this. I've got a lot on your agenda plate there, so I'm gonna start off with showing some flu numbers, because I know that a lot of people have been asking about flu. This COVID update, I only got one slide really to show you. So every person that goes to a Sentinel site in North Carolina with a COVID-like or flu-like illness gets a nasal swab when they go to one of these Sentinel sites. And then they test to see what virus it is that caused that. So this is a graph over the last year, so starting last, last March, I guess it is, and runs through to about a couple days ago. And you can see that COVID, its numbers have been up there pretty high, but the other ones that you see, the yellow line, that's rhinovirus, and then flu is the light green one. So it went down through the summer, spring and summer, and it has not started to show yet on the Sentinel sites. That means that there's not much flu out there right now that's being picked up. In Beaufort County, about three weeks ago, I started getting test results for the body clinics, Agape, and Health Department when we do flu tests. So far in Beaufort County, we've done 92 tests, and we've had three positives show up already, which is kind of a low number, 3% of the numbers have been positive for flu. So it is out there, but it really hasn't started to make its way through our community. And hopefully the COVID interventions will keep those numbers down for flu this year. But getting to COVID, right now in North Carolina, they're approaching 4 million confirmed cases, and there's 5,560 deaths have been recorded. And right now, there's 2,240 that have been, are in the hospital. Over five and a half million tests have been done in North Carolina, and today's date, or today's positivity rate is 10.5% of those that are tested were positive. There's a graph to show the kind of last couple, three weeks for the COVID numbers. And in Beaufort County, so we're at 23,876 tests have been conducted on residents. Of those, 1,876 are positive. Of those, 1,876. I might also mention that that is about 4% of our population has tested positive at this point. For every...
Are you still going by the same book? If you have one that's positive, three people probably are positive, or asymptomatic or what?
That's a, that's a good estimate that for every test that we've had positive, probably three other cases out there that didn't come in and get tested. So if that's the case, then probably, that's 12%.
Is that actually really sick?
It is an estimate, so, which means that if that's true, then as much as 12% of our population has probably contracted COVID during this year. I guess, yeah. It's hard to do math when people are looking at you. So out of the 1,876 cases, 95 have been hospitalized. That's about 5%. And 56 have died, and that, of course, is 3% of the total number of tests that have been positive. The average age of death is 80.4, and about 34%, or 30% of those deaths occurred in the long-term care facilities. Right now, I have about 252 people that I know that have COVID out there presently, and we have six people in the hospital, and one person is now on a ventilator, which means about 83, 8.6% of people have recovered. The long-term care facilities, we have two of them that are still considered outbreaks. To stay, to get out of outbreak status, they have to go 28 days without a positive. So anytime a positive shows up, then they have to start all over with that counter. And what we've been seeing is they'll go a couple weeks without one, and then somebody will get positive, usually a staff member, and then that starts their calendar, or timer all over again. So showing over the last couple of weeks, the purple-colored graph shows that 45 out of 10,000 cases, which is, equates to 211 cases that we've had in Beaufort County over those last two weeks, which puts us in the third tier. But you can see, a lot of the other counties around us are much higher, are doing higher, they're in the fourth tier. And this is something I've noticed, and I'll show you some graphs later on, is that we are in quite an uptick in numbers in Beaufort County. If y'all get the daily reports, y'all have probably been following that and see that. The bottom graph is a new alert that the state puts out that color codes the level of COVID activity and concerns for North Carolina, because we're the lightest color, the light yellow. Excuse me. And I left all my notes in my office, so I don't have to go with memory. But in order to be, that color code is decided on what is your, your cases per 10,000, which is 200 or more is the highest level, 100 to 200 is the second level, and then, of course, under 100 would be the third, which is where we're at. That criteria, plus they look at the positivity rate of the county and whether the hospital system is highly impacted. So we're in yellow, so we don't meet those criteria at this moment. It would not surprise me if we go orange, but the other two factors, especially the hospital impact, may keep us in the yellow. But I don't know. The audience says that right now their system is concerning, but not overly worked or anything like that. And this, this graph will show you where in our county the highest numbers are, so Washington and Pine Town, and then Chaco County lead the way with numbers, rates, followed by Aurora, Bath, and Pantico. Did I say that right? Yeah. Anyway. As far as tests go, we've done over 1,000 tests last week, and our positivity rate for last week was 13.2, which is much higher than it has been. This is the highest positivity rate we've had since the event has started. So we, I was hoping that it would stay, you know, below that 10 mark, but what that means of being above 10 is that the long-term care facilities have to test their staff twice a week now versus, excuse me, have to test them every week versus every two weeks. So it has that impact on them. out that color codes the level of COVID activity and concerns for North Carolina. You can see we're the lightest color, the light yellow. And I left all my notes in my office, so I don't have to go with memory. But in order to be, uh, that color code is decided on what is your, uh, your cases per 10,000, which, uh, is 200 or more is the highest level, 100 to 200 is the second level, and then, of course, under 100 would be the third, which is where we're at. That criteria, plus they look at the positivity rate of the county and whether the hospital system is highly impacted. Uh, so we're in yellow, so we don't meet those criteria at this moment. It would not surprise me if we go orange, but the other two factors, especially the hospital impact, may keep us, um, in the yellow. Vida says that right now their system is, uh, concerning, but not overly worked or anything like that. And this, uh, this graph will show you where in our county the highest numbers are, so, uh, Washington and Pine Town, and then Chaco County lead the way with numbers, uh, rates, followed by Aurora, Bath, and Pantico. Did I say that right? Um, as far as tests go, we've done over 1,000 tests, uh, last week, and our positivity rate for last week was 13.2, which is much higher than it has been. This is the highest positivity rate we've had since the, um, event has started. Um, so, uh, we, I was hoping that it would stay, you know, below that 10 mark, but, uh, what that means being above 10 is, is that the, uh, long-term care facilities have to test their staff twice a week now versus, uh, excuse me, have to test them every week versus every two weeks. So it has that impact on them. So here you can see the two graphs. The top one is a seven-day average, and the bottom one is a 21-day average. Um, you can see that in both cases that we've reached the highest number, uh, that we've seen since the beginning. So we are in our highest wave, uh, that we've had. Some people have been asking, uh, you think it has anything to do with Thanksgiving because of that holiday where a lot of people got together, and it may be that's what's factoring in here. I, I can't tell. If it is, um, then we'll probably see the wave continue because everybody that contracted it during Thanksgiving would be giving it to other people who would spread it even bigger. So hopefully that's not the case. Uh, again, um, it's, it's kind of hard to predict where we're going with this. I can only react, uh, within like about a week period with, you know. Uh, here we see a graph that's, uh, showing also the waves, and this, this would be the number of active cases that we have. And you can see that this is the most active cases we've had in Beaufort County since the beginning. This graph is, uh, I use this graph, even though it shows the same data, but it, it breaks out the long-term care facility numbers. And so you can see that this wave that we're having right now is not impacting the long-term care facilities like the one that we had suffered about a month and a half, two months ago. The, the good thing is that we're doing everything we can right now, and the, the facilities are doing what they can to try to stop that, um, uh, from spreading again amongst their residents. So the number of, uh, positives that, uh, reported sim, uh, not having symptoms was 17%. Now, this has gone down from 22% to 20%, 17%. So I went back and I looked at just the last month or so, at the beginning of November to now, and that number's more like 15%. So more cases are symptomatic based off of that. It may be that, uh, only people that come and get tested now, a lot more sick people come and get tested versus people that are not symptomatic. And then the next, uh, pie chart shows the, uh, percent of people that are known to be contacts, and that was at 57%. About two months ago, that was 60%. So that number's going down. So when I take the last, since November and look at it, this is where my memory's gonna have to go. It was like 48%, which means it's flipped. So now more of my cases that are coming up are community spread versus contacts that we know of. Again, the large number that we've had, the fact that, uh, percentage is up, and the fact that we've had, having so many more people that are, are contracting where they don't know where they got it, all indicates that we have a lot wider spread in the community now than we did probably a month and a half, month ago. Uh, this is showing the impact on the hospital. This is all the Vida system. You can see that, uh, top chart shows hospitalizations, uh, and the spike hopefully will be going down there. And ICU numbers and the ventilators are all staying fairly close. So they may be seeing more people in the hospital, but we're not seeing a, a increased number of people that are on ventilators and, uh, in the ICU. Not a major, uh, increase in those numbers, which is hopefully a sign that the vulnerable people are being a lot more cautious and, and keeping themselves, um, safe. Uh, some other quick information to pass on. Uh, the annex building is finally, we got that up and running. And, um, this is why I need my notes, 'cause I jotted, dotted all these things down. But, uh, I know we've been seeing since, uh, the 23rd of November, we've been seeing about 85, um, test, people get tested through the building, uh, per day. So that's a pretty good turnaround of, of people. And most people that come through there, uh, seem to be happy with what's going on because of how quick it is and the fact that we're able to, to bring that service to people that are ADN it, people, um, you know, that want to come in there and get done, uh, tested the convenience of it. What else was I gonna say about that? Um, we also did some flu vaccines through there. When, uh, we started to do the COVID vaccines, we'll be able to run it through this system as well, which will be a, a good, um, service for the, the population or citizens. And speaking of the vaccine plans, so next week, we, uh, the state will be sending out the first doses of, uh, the Pfizer vaccine to, uh, hospital systems. And I don't think Vida is the first, uh, one of the first hospitals to get it. So they shouldn't, they probably won't be getting it that week, but they'll probably get it the following week. The Health Department, we should start receiving ours in the following week also. We'll be receiving the Moderna, uh, vaccine through the McKesson system, and, uh, I don't have a clue how many doses I'll be getting right now. I haven't been told that. But I do expect to, to have some in-house, uh, the week of the 20th. What I do ask everybody is, uh, to, to be patient with the vaccination, because my understanding is the first week there's 85,000 doses that will be sent throughout North Carolina, the following week 175,000 doses. That may sound like a lot until you start thinking about how many people need this vaccine. And, um, and then after that, there'll be, uh, weekly allotments that go out. Again, I don't know how many I'll be able to get on any particular week for planning purposes, but the idea is for us to phase in, uh, who gets tested based off of the CDC guidelines and the, uh, the ACIP guidelines, which North Carolina will, um, pretty much follow, and then that's what we'll be following. But just to give y'all an idea of those phases, uh, the 1A category would be the healthcare professionals in the county, which, uh, which includes the staff of the long-term care facilities, EMS, uh, and then the residents that are in the, uh, long-term care facilities. So they'll get the first dosing, um, as soon as we get, uh, numbers to do that. The next group of people will be what we call essential workers, so your educators, the police, fire, and corrections. Now, the reason those are first is because they are, um, interfacing a lot with the public, and they are getting, um, the potential of spreading it to other people if they catch it because of that. So they're the ones that get hit first. And then 1C will be all the adults with high risk, which in this case includes, if you're 65 and older, with two comorbidities. So between the AB and C, you're talking about the first group of people getting the vaccine will be that group, these people. Uh, well, there's a long list that the, um, CDC has. I, the most common ones are, um, heart disease, pulmonary disease, um, diabetes, and obesity, and... And it'll be determined by your, uh, the physician. Yeah, it won't be just somebody coming up and saying, "I have these." It has to be, uh, especially early on. And then, uh, the second phase is gonna be risk-based, and that's gonna be a little bit more targeted of, uh, for industry such as, um, our meatpacking industry. The, those people that have, are, you know, don't meet Phase 1C, but they may be 65 and older, so they would be targeted in the next phase. The same with the targeted populations like the homeless and, and others that are, um, frontline workers at, uh, moderate risk of exposure, so they would fall into that category. And again, if they meet those, uh, chronic conditions, um, and, and, uh, other adults with the one chronic condition. So they would all fall under Phase 2. Uh, Phase 3 would include your, most of your students, uh, at college M, K through 12, as well as any other industries that weren't covered in Phase 1 or 2. And then finally, Phase 4 would be the remaining population, those who are originally not at risk, uh, for, uh, poor outcomes due to COVID. Um, the timeline for that is, like I said, mentioned, 1, Group 1A, 1B will probably be done before January. 1C hopefully be right at the, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, before the beginning of January. 1C right there in the January timeframe, and that will go on probably for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. And then they'll, Phase 2 will come in, Phase 3 and Phase 4. I imagine we'll be at Phase 4, April timeframe. And at that point, everybody should be able to get a vaccine. When you get to Phase 4, everybody should be able to get a vaccine at your, uh, medical clinic, if they're a provider, doesn't need a provider. CVS will probably, uh, have, you know, the pharmacies will probably have it as well, uh, and the Health Department will have it. Most of your medical providers will have it. And then we'll probably open up, um, point of distributions throughout the, the county to try to get people that don't have easy access to, uh, there or for more convenience for everybody will have, like, something set up at the, maybe at the community college where everybody can drive through and get the, the shot during Phase 4 timeframe. So, any questions about all that?
I've got a question. Um, the 28 days you speak of, 28 days without an incident, is that what we kind of can follow along at home and we see that time clicking up? That's how we know we're doing good?
At a long-term care facility. That's for a long-term care facility.
So the 28 days, we're not using that as a, as a scorecard, so to speak, for, for county, or would they?
I don't think, well, I can't say we'll never.
How do we know this thing is over?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'll, it'll probably never be over.
Right.
What we're hoping to do is get it to a point where it's like a background level that we've kind of, as a society, come to accept.
With these phases, are you gonna have, um, some sort of, um, signage that said now serve in Phase 2 or something, or?
Oh, we, we, we got together today to have our first discussion about communication of this, because we want, and I said that today we're gonna start with me saying to y'all so that people can see how that phases work, because again, I'm asking for patience because your time may not be but a way. And so, I only have limited supply. If I had 50,000 doses, I would start tomorrow doing vaccinations on everybody, but I don't have that. So, yes, we're going to try to get the word out on when the phases are going so that people will know. That's the Pfizer, um, and it is the ultra-cold, uh, storage and, and handling, uh, which is probably why we're not getting it, because I don't think, uh, Vida has that ultra-cold storage capability, but I'm not sure.
The, thanks. The, um, I'll take this mask off so I can talk. The, um, people who have passed, the average age is 80. And if I'm correct, only one person below the age of 65 in Beaufort County has passed from this.
Five.
Five at this point. How old was the youngest?
35.
35. Okay. We've had, there have been no children, schoolchildren that have been hospitalized?
I, I don't believe, I don't know for a fact if there hasn't been any hospitalized. I haven't heard about any being hospitalized. Out of 95, I don't think any of them are children, but I don't know.
But schoolchildren are lowest risk, practically no, practically zero risk?
As far as ill effects, correct.
Okay. Well, okay. And, um, the, um, hmm. So the teachers, they're among the first group of people that are getting the vaccine. Is that right? Are they in Group 2?
Group 1C, I think.
C, 1C or 2, yeah, that's fine.
1B.
All right. So it, it wouldn't be unreasonable to say that, uh, once they have been vaccinated, the whole school could reopen?
Are they, they're open now, but you mean back to full?
Back to full capacity.
I think it's reasonable.
It's not, it's not unreasonable. I mean, it's, they're at zero risk now, so if the teachers and the staff were, uh, to receive the vaccine, there would, in theory, be zero risk.
I would say zero risk, but to the children, correct.
Yeah, I said theory. Theory, there would be zero risk.
Yeah, the, the concern with the children is more about who they're taking it home to. That's really what we're addressing with the, the schools the way they are. And I know that the, um, the, um, the guidance right now is for them to be in A if they're younger than five years, uh, fifth grade, right? I can't remember that right now, but, um, but they have the option of the B and C is what they're going with right now, so they're at B.
But if, if you look at the children being near zero risk, and the teachers and staff were inoculated, and let's say that, uh, that 12th grade student, the, the parent was 25 years old when they were born, we're at age 37. And 35 is the youngest that any single person has passed, and they had complications, obviously, in order to have passed at that age. So my question is, you know, why? Well, you can't answer this, but I'm asking this in, 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 in theory, why are the schools so locked up and closed with all of this going on? We, we have an extremely low-risk situation, and the Vida, the, the, uh, vaccine should put an end to the whole school problem. There are a lot of parents out there that are going crazy, and I know from my own personal experience, the distance learning doesn't work, and all the money that the schools have spent for these hotspots and everything else has been thrown in the trash can, it just as well have been because it's useless. So we, we, you know, the county, we need to be looking at getting our schools open again and getting them back functioning again.
Use your mic. Yeah. When, um, when you get vaccinated, will you have some sort of identification that says you've been that vaccinated? I mean, are you gonna, like, I voted, you got a sticker or something that, I mean? I mean, because like, if you're not wearing, if you're to get, if you get vaccinated and you think maybe you don't need to wear a mask, and you're starting to get ma, masked-shamed, do I have something to show that I've been vaccinated?
You will. Um, the vaccine is a two-dose series, depending on which one. Right now, we're talking about Pfizer and Moderna, so I can only talk about them. There's two dosing that you get, one, and then 21 days later, you get the second one. So the whole system will be in, uh, a program that's called CVS, CVMS. And, um, in order to get the vaccine, you're gonna have to fill out a bunch of paperwork, and then once you, uh, fill that out, you get authorized, because it basically is gonna check to make sure you're one of these priorities. And then it will allow you to opt-in for text message or reminder for your second one. And it'll also, uh, if you opt-in, send you a reminder of where to go and get your second. So the system is going to keep track on all that. But let's suppose you opt-out, you don't want all that information coming to you, and you're told to come in at three weeks. When you come in, we'll be able to look up to see that you got your first shot, and then, of course, you'll get a validation of that, like a little card that says you've been vaccinated. And that card is also something that you can take to any state, and in theory, you get vaccinated there as well. It's a federal, federal program.
Any, any other commissioner that's not already asked a question? Okay, you wanna go into the, uh, next item, uh, James?
Uh, the nutritionist, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so last month, y'all allowed me to hire, uh, a vacant position. So far, I haven't been able to attract anybody because it was a part-time position, and luck would have it, and I call it luck because Hyde County happened to reach out to me a couple of weeks ago and said, asked if we could take over, uh, the clients that they had there, because their, uh, WIC administrator was retiring. And so I thought, well, what are we talking about? Uh, and in essence, what I'll, they'll do is they will transfer the money that they receive for their clients to us, and then I'll be able to use that money to make this position full-time, assuming that y'all would, uh, approve this to happen. So, um, the increase from the 32 hours to the 40 hours is what I'm asking for, and it will be covered by that transfer of money from Hyde County.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second. Jim, Jim, that's, oh, that sounds good that Hyde County's gonna transfer the money, but what's the other side of the story? Or will they have to provide service to Hyde County?
Just to their 92, 97 WIC clients.
Okay, well, is that gonna be enough money to, to compensate what you're trying to do?
It's gonna, it's with a couple of thousand above.
Okay. The, the problem I have with that is, is when they're ready to pull out, and we still got a full-time position. And I don't have a problem with, with, with helping this county or taking the money, but I, I, the question that, that made me ask the question, you didn't tell me the whole story.
I was trying to tell you the whole story.
Well, you did after I asked.
Okay.
But if you're sure that that will take care of that position, their funds... But if you're sure that that will take care of that position, their funds, plus the traveling going to Hyde County, I'm fine with it.
I believe it does, and it covers over that. And we have a hard time attracting a nutritionist. They have even a harder time getting one in Hyde County. So, I don't think they'll ever, I don't think they want to at this point. So, as long as their health director, the one he gives us there, I'm pretty sure will be.
We'll not be adding a position. Well, it was a part-time position. The only thing we're doing is, it's not gonna cost your department any more money. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to send someone to Hyde County?
We will send somebody to Hyde County once a week to work out of their health department to issue out the needs, the vouchers and to work with people that have like babies that need formula and stuff like that.
Is that person gonna have to work the county from the standpoint of traveling around the county?
No, there's not. They don't travel out of the health department. They'll be maintained in. They don't go to Ocracote either. There's a special allowances for Ocracote to not have to have the WIC person there.
The $1,500 a month, we're increasing the salary from 39,000 to 55,000?
I have my notes with me, sir.
Well, according to this, the position is currently budgeted 39,161 dollars. For this, for the salary benefits, previous employee did not elect health coverage. The proposed cost of this position at 40 hours a week is 55,739 dollars. So, that's the, that's the roughly, that's 16,000 of the 18,000. So, there's 2,000 that's left for transportation. If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly.
That's, I, I, right. I see this as having an extra, almost $2,000 a year that would cover those kind of things.
Okay. Now, the money that Hyde County has, the $18,000, about how much of that comes from federal or state funds versus their funds?
It all comes from the state and federal dollars.
So, the WIC employee is totally paid with, our WIC employee is totally paid with state or federal funds?
Correct. The one that, the position we're talking about?
Right.
Yes. And it will not include. I don't see us using any county dollars for that position for this increase in service. So, that's the answer you want, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that answers.
That's the truth, that's what you're seeking, I mean.
Yeah, it's not.
Gotcha.
Almost, Jim, almost.
But you know what I'm trying.
I know what you're saying.
I know what you're saying, but yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
No county dollars would have to be used to make this move.
Now, who, where is the contract for this?
Well, the contract is at the WIC office. Right now, the contract is signed, but if y'all don't approve it, then it'll be null and void.
But, okay, who wrote the contract?
Hyde County gave it to me, and we sent it to the WIC regional consultants for approval.
All right. Now, I have, I have a little problem in all of this. Who's signing this for the county?
I am.
Okay. Now, I wanna, I wanna say this to the board. We have, this board has allowed everybody in the county to sign contracts. You know, contracts should come to the board, be approved by the board, and for the board chairman to sign. Because we don't know what's in that contract. You're approving a contract tonight, you don't know what you're approving. For instance, let me ask you this question. What is the opt-out? How can we opt out of this? Let's say that things suddenly change and we say, we don't wanna do this anymore. How do we get out of this contract?
Send notice to them, 30-day notice.
Is it a 30, 30-day notice?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I wanna raise the issue to the board again, that, that I'm not gonna vote for a contract and everybody's brother can sign it. We've got problems right now with the letting the sheriff sign contracts and he's running around claiming he's voiding the contract. And it was a contract that I objected to to begin with. It should have been a commissioner-signed contract. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of the county to watch after their money. And when we start designating people to sign contracts, those people can walk from those contracts whenever they want to and make trouble for us. That's what's going on in the sheriff's department right now. And I'm willing to vote for this provided the chairman of the board signs the contract. And I'm not voting for it if he doesn't. Providing the chairman of the board signs a contract after it's reviewed by the commissioners?
After it's reviewed by the commissioners.
Has, has the contract?
Is there a motion?
Has the contract been through?
Second.
Has the contract been through our attorney? It has not. I guess one of the questions that Ed had is, is the term of it. You know, we're, we're looking at a full-time employee and we don't know whether this is 12 months or whether it's a three-year contract with Hyde County. Is that, am I saying it right?
This contract is only good until June. We'll have to redo it after that. Because I only signed, you know, to cover this fiscal year to make sure that everything's gonna be good in the future. Right now, so in a way, I'm trying to make sure that I'll be a good neighbor to our county because they're having problems right now finding anybody to do the program at all. But at the same time, I need to try to get this person to a full-time position.
So, it's gonna be on a fiscal year basis, is what you're saying? From July 1 to June 30 of each year?
I hadn't thought it, whether it's gonna be a three-year contract after this year or not. But right now, it's just to cover until the time. And, you know, and, and I guess from my perspective, I understand major contracts and stuff at the county, but I feel like I'm assigned as the administrator of the health department. So, by coming to get permission from y'all, I feel like I could sign those contracts, you know. But of course, I'm here to do y'all's wills.
Since, Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Since, since Jim has explained that this just goes for a few months, I'm fine with it. And when June come, we'll just look at the new contract and see if it's for three years. I don't have a problem with it in Hyde County up until June at all.
Why don't, why doesn't the, the, why doesn't he sign it and the chairman sign it? You know, once again, we're back into this bad practices of everybody and his brother signing contracts somewhere. The sheriff has already made trouble for us, allowing him to sign a contract. Now, in the old days, and I've been here a while, in the old days, every contract that this board approved was signed by the chairman. And it needs to be signed by the chairman and whoever else that the board wants to allow to sign it.
Mr. Richards, in the essence of time, I don't have a problem with what you're saying, but you're only talking a couple of months. And if, if June, he's gonna, I mean, this just, this expires at June. Didn't you just say it expires?
This contract expires in June.
Yes. It expires in June.
Half a year, that's six months.
I don't think Jim is.
Okay. We got two motions. We've got a motion and a second to hire the person, if I remember correctly. Okay? And we've had a discussion. Is there any more discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right. If not, all those in favor of the original motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? It failed. Okay. Now, do you want to make another motion? Okay. You wanna restate, I mean, restate yours?
I restate the motion to approve what the health director is requesting, provided he and the chairman of the board sign the contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
There might be this first, this six months that you talked, this, this first contract.
Yeah, it'll come up again. We'll go through the same thing again.
Yeah, I've got something. Go ahead. Yeah, this is nothing about you or your group. It's just a practice we need to start right now and keep going forward with this practice in perpetuity. Can never let this happen again. Cannot let somebody negate a contract that we're a party to and they're really not. They're a junior party to the contract, just like you'd be a junior party to the contract. But we represent people of Beaufort County, represent the money. And we're the ones that signed, we're the ones representing because we, we tax. So, we have to be in charge of the negotiations and the contract, to whatever extent we wish to be. That's just the way it's gotta be going forward, on every deal, with every department. Any, any other discussion? Comment from either Brian or David? Okay? Ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Will you, will you, will you clean that?
Sure will.
Thanks.
Jim, do you have that contract with you?
I don't have it on me.
We're down to item K, replacement of the chillers at Northside High School and Northeast Elementary School. Floor is yours, Superintendent Cheeseman?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us. And I've asked some of my colleagues to come in case you have some questions regarding this topic. Specifically, Northside High School has a failing chiller and Northeast Elementary School has a chiller that's in need of repair. The repair work has begun on the Northeast Elementary School chiller. We look forward to that being done shortly. And the Northside High School chiller, we're looking forward to that work being started in January. The total, as you may see, is approximately 316,291. And the Board of Education is asking specifically, as the county commissioners would assume half the cost, at 158,145.50 in terms of a collaboration with our facilities.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? I would like to have some discussion on this before somebody jumps to make a, make a motion. Okay. Do you, do you have an engineer in your maintenance department?
I think you and I talked about that before, and the answer is no.
Okay. Have you had an engineering evaluation of these chiller situation?
Yes.
By whom?
Brady Services and Allred Mechanical.
No, they're not engineers.
They did a site survey on our chiller and compressor.
Did they, do they have, did they give you a document with an engineer's seal on it?
No.
They are actually people that repair these things, aren't they?
Yes, they're in the repair business, installation business, yes.
Okay. I can't vote for that. We've had problems with school system before coming in, asking for money for things like this, when there was very poor work had been done in the background. I have a, I have a problem, being an engineer is a part of it, knowing that you're running some very complex systems over there. And I did it at Northside School when the janitor was running the system, a hot water, cold water, four-pipe system, whatever. And nobody knew what was going on. And I sat in the auditorium and sweated to death over this stuff and went back out and said, why don't you get an engineer to figure out what's wrong with this thing and work this? Oh, no, the janitor, he knows all about it. Yeah, sure he does. As far as I'm concerned, I've read this and looked at this, I'm not willing to vote for it until you bring me a study by a licensed professional mechanical engineer who does this kind of work as to what his opinion is. Because I noticed that you're talking about installing extra pumps and all this sort of thing. That's engineering. That's not repair work. This is sophisticated stuff. Now, in the past, we've, there's, there's a guy here in Washington, I can't think of his name right offhand, he's only a few blocks from where we are, who has gone over your systems before and given you advice at our insistence. But I'm also gonna tell you this, not voting for any school budgets that don't have an engineer in it. Because you're running, you know, all of these new schools, very sophisticated system. And Joe Sixpack can't run them. Okay? So, I'm, I cannot vote for this, and I really can't recommend that anybody else vote for it, until you can produce professional opinion as to what's really going on. You know, if I'm selling, if I'm selling suitcases, everybody needs a suitcase. But if I'm a professional doing a study on who needs a suitcase, not everybody needs a suitcase.
Sure.
Mr. Chair?
John's got a question.
Superintendent?
Sir?
What is the status of these chillers right this minute? Are they, are they out of service?
So, Northside, or Northeast will be repaired this week.
Okay.
Finishing, so that'll be back up and running. And your Northside High School is down, basically. So, no, it's not functioning right now.
Jimmy, what stage are these chillers? The one at Northeast?
Twenty years for Northside High School and nineteen for Northeast.
How many times has the one been repaired at Northeast?
Northeast, to the best of my knowledge, we've, this would be the third compressor. It's been put on one year.
Throwing good money out the bag?
Yes.
Sir?
I would agree.
How about the other one? The one?
The chillers at Northside High School have been running at 50% capacity for a while. New position since June, so I would have to go back and find you how long they've been running since then. But we could, the best we've received since I've been here is 50% capacity of the ones going to start.
At 50% capacity, how much efficiency is that wasting of good time?
Probably seventy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Unless somebody else wants to speak. Mr. Booth just made my case. The gentleman just told you you had a problem. And you sent for the repairman to replace parts. Now, I have personal, some personal knowledge of that Northside stuff, and I'm telling you, it's never been running right. You need a professional heating and air mechanical engineer to go over the thing and figure out what's wrong with it. And I, I'm not voting for to throw this money away. I wanna cite a couple of things to you. The school came in to us about five or six years ago, and they wanted $400,000 to fix the water system at Washington High School. And they couldn't tell us what they were gonna do. And they'd never had an engineering evaluation. Well, when we finished, they went away. They didn't need any money. The same thing happened at Northside, the grammar school. The drainage, the drainage, the drainage. They just needed $400,000, the problem would go away. But the board couldn't tell us what they were gonna do with the money. I insisted on an engineer. In both of those cases, we saved a lot of money.
To be very specific, and I appreciate your thinking, with this money, we're going to buy a new chiller for Northside High School and repair the one at Northeast. To be very specific, so there will be no doubt in terms of what 316,291 dollars pays for, we are buying a new chiller for Northside High School and repairing the one at Northeast. So, whatever confusion happened before my tenure, just being very transparent, that's what we're gonna do with the money.
Any, any other questions from commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, the school finance officer. With the, I'm assuming y'all are like us and that you get your sales tax back at the end of the year?
We only receive a local portion, but yes, it comes at the end of the year.
Okay. So, it, so you've included sales tax on this, as I understand it, if you were to take the option with the expansion valve, it would be 157.95, would be half of that because of the sales tax you would get back at the end of the year. The number you've got includes the sales tax, so we don't wanna pay that twice.
Right. But again, if we pay, or the state maintains the 4.75, we will receive the 2%. That's all we're gonna get back. Whereas the county gets all of their sales tax.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Yes. One of, one of the things I'd like to know is what, what is your projected fund balance for this year? The, the school system hasn't been operating. You have to have surplus funds. You've received COVID funds. You've received all kinds of things. I perceive this as another money grab. And I, and it's not budgeted. If it was budgeted, you had the opportunity. If that thing been running at 50% of capacity for over six months, you should have had this in your, in your capital budget for this year, and it wasn't in there. So, there's a lot of financial things wrong here. And, and I'm, you know, I don't, I can't understand how these commissioners could possibly vote for this because it doesn't make financial sense. It doesn't make budgeting sense. You've had an opportunity in the budget several times to bring this up. So, this, this is money that, that you have and you need to dig up. And I know that you have the money.
So, specifically, I think you make a good point. I think we try to be very intentional with our dollars, and I won't argue that point. Our fund balance is projected to be 1.239 million, specifically answering your question. The reason I'm here this evening about this circumstance is, quite frankly, I was encouraged to be here by this very board in a partnership specifically around facilities. by this very board in a partnership specifically around facility use. And that's why I'm here this evening. I'm here because specifically, the county usually helps the school system specifically around facility need. I'm not arguing that point, it just happens to be the case. And so with that, we're just asking for your consideration. And specifically, the money would be used to purchase the chiller at Northside High School and to repair the chiller at Northeast Elementary School. And any other thoughts of the matter? This is just what we're trying to do tonight.
Is there a motion, Mr. Chairman? Oh, one more go at what he just said.
One last.
Well, it may not necessarily be the last one because this is a lot of money, Mr. Chairman. Trying to shut people down is not advisable. I, I'm giving you the chance to ask one more question. Well, trying to shut people down and control this board is not going to work, Mr. Chairman. You did this before. When you were chairman, I'm just letting you know right up front, it won't work this time. Go ahead and proceed. The, what you just said, we, we give support when the profession, when it's done in a professional way. And that is with the engineer doing the study, making the recommendation that everybody can see what's going on. And then we don't necessarily give support. We've given a lot less support in the last five, six years than we've given before simply because the school board couldn't justify their position. You've got a 1.3 million fund balance. This money that we're going to do tonight is going to come out of our fund balance. The people of Beaufort County are going to have to raise this money twice. Were you sitting on a nice fund balance? And possibly even a bigger fund balance than we know about because of the COVID funds that are, that have flowed through a lot of government agencies. And I can't support this simply because you haven't used good management practices to come to where you are. You went out and you bought something, and after you bought it, while it was being delivered, you came to us for the money. You should have had an engineering study before this was done, before you made any move.
So I recognize your point that you've made multiple times now, and I'll take it into consideration in the future to better our practices. But considering this is where we are right now, we're going to need some support inside this building. And in a, in a fair effort to look at supporting our facilities, we're simply asking you to divide the cost. And we appreciate your concern. And with respect to our money management. Our finance department was most recently awarded with state recognition for how they manage our fiscal use. And we're very proud of that team. And even more so, please understand that when you do receive COVID money, there are typically deadlines associated with that money. And that's not the kind of money that you just start throwing into someone's fund balance. It's not a keystone. And the state has done a very nice job putting different types of budgets together that sometimes public schools don't realize they're even coming until they drop. So considering that, we've been doing the best under the current circumstance. And we really appreciate your thinking and sharing this cost. And it would be very nice to be able to utilize that other money for very specific things that touch teachers and students directly. So thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Uh, you've got a problem right now. You, you don't have heat in one building, you've got partial heat in another, right?
We're having issues inside the building, certainly.
Yeah. And you understand that it might be better to, going forward, to bring in an engineer to keep this system running correctly?
I've listened to the point, yes, sir, definitely.
Is it, would it be a consideration come budget time, possibly?
Well, yes, but I speak on behalf of the board. And also, please know that hiring an engineer would cost money for that salary.
Yeah.
And so there are a lot of different things when it comes to funding school systems, so state will call federal dollars.
Is it possible to go out and get an engineer? Sure, there's plenty of consultants. Consult, get consulting, I mean. There's a little Ron Pledger, that's the guy's name. He worked on those systems before.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to talk with the board about it, definitely.
Would you?
Absolutely.
I mean, and decide to source this in possibly and keep it running properly? Because these chillers are awfully complicated. I can't even begin to try to understand how, how they work.
To be really thoughtful is, we're very excited. Mr. Stokes is now our director, has had a really great attention to detail. The state, in a DPI specifically, issued a together five-year facility use study. That's due back to the state in the spring. So when we take a look at that, we'll have a better understanding of what our needs are, absolutely. But in this current circumstance, we're really excited that you're entertaining this concept.
I understand. It is winter, it's come, winter's coming on. This was a winter day today.
Look, at the end of the day, you're dealing with adults and children.
Yeah.
I wouldn't stand here if it were just an empty warehouse.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Did you make a motion? Is there a motion stayed in second? Any other discussion?
It was $158,145.50, that's half of the cost.
So your motion is for 158? Okay. Any, anybody else have a question?
Oh, this is sales tax, correct, we can deduct the two, half the 2%. I prefer you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can offer that you would, that the motion may say you would pay half the cost as requested by the schools less any applicable sales tax return.
I would recommend the same thing because, um, willing that on, on the first bid from Brady, I am not getting the sales tax to work out to the correct amount.
We've had issues with our bidders in the past, and so we did that, we pulled into that bid and we drew it to the sales tax.
I think they've shorted the sales tax about $6,000.
Will you accept that?
I will.
Okay. All right, no other question? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, congratulations, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're down to item number L, the item for decision on salt and water. Ann Williams, I think is in the back. Ms. Ann, if you'll step out. Ann, I'm not sure, I, I, did anybody see that they wiped that off? Ann, you might want to wipe that down. I wouldn't ask you to do it, but it's right there.
The first thing before you tonight, and before I start, I have our district's technician with me tonight, Nathaniel Ward, in case there are any questions.
If you feel uncomfortable with the mask, you can take it off.
I'm so used to wearing it now, I forget I have it on.
It might, it might sound better over the system.
All right. The master agreement put before you tonight awards the Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District its matching funds, technical assistance funds, and stewardship monitoring funds for mine farm buyout sites for program year 2021 through the Department of Ag and Consumer Services Division of Soil and Water Conservation. Funds awarded total $28,777. The effective date of this agreement begins July 1, 2020 and terminates on June 30, 2023. Amendments will be offered during fiscal year 2022 and 2023 to award additional matching technical assistance and stewardship monitoring funds to complete the master agreement. All match requirements are satisfied through the district's 2021 budget. The agreement was approved by the district's Board of Supervisors on November 16, 2020. The district's board recommends approval of the agreement out of Beaufort County Board of Commissioners.
Any commissioner have a question? The, who puts up the match?
It's in our operating budget, Beaufort County.
Didn't y'all use your operating budget for some other stuff to, uh, to match?
The things that are in our budget that it matches are salaries, benefits, mileage, cell phone use, supplies, that kind of thing. It's already an item.
I understand, but, but, but I thought that some other programs you had already matched. I mean, if you add up all the matches, would it be more than what you're paying in salaries and supplies? All right, okay. So how much money would that match be?
This match for this matching agreement?
Yes.
$48,777.
Okay, and that's money that we're not going to have to contribute any new money toward?
That's correct.
It, it's, they're just going to give us the money?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
It's just for shriving about money.
Yes, sir.
Well, me, we eat hours, do I qualify to get some money?
Okay, we have, have a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion or question? All right, all those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? I think everybody. You want to go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
Ann?
Through the 2016 Disaster Recovery Program, the Beaufort Soil and Water District was awarded contract number 171754042 to remove debris from various waterways in Beaufort County. Phases one and two of the program were completed in 2018. Phase three was completed by RDC Debris Removal Construction in December 2019. Funds in the amount of $112,233.49 remain to be spent under the district's contract. The scope of work for phase four has been identified and approved. RDC Debris Removal Construction would like to complete phase four's scope of work and has offered to complete the work at the same rate per linear foot as they bid and worked during phase three. Under phase four, 42,900 linear feet will be completed at a total cost of $63,921. The district's Board of Supervisors requests that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners approve moving forward with RDC Debris Removal Construction and its phase four debris removal program.
Any, any questions, Ann? Well, there, isn't there about a 40 or 50,000 dollar surplus in that?
How much would any of this is completed? I don't believe that it's that much.
What, what do you intend to do with that?
We hope to identify other areas to work in and spend as much of it as we can.
Motion to approve. Have a motion, is there a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You call it needed and see if you can get her to send you a check for that double duty. Okay, um, item number M is concerning the Board of Elections overtime. Brian, or you, is there someone here, is Kelly here, or?
Hello, Kelly is here, I'm here, several members of our board members are here. I'm Jason Williams, I'm one of the members of the Board of Elections. We asked to have this item added to the agenda tonight because we have money that was allocated us by the State Board of Elections. This money was given to them from the federal government through the CARES Act. If we don't spend this money, then we will have to return it to the state. We would like, so our director, Kelly Harris Hopkins, is here tonight. She's been our director for 19 years. As the director, she is exempt from, from overtime rules. And so therefore, she has not been able to receive any overtime in the past. Because we have this money that if we do not spend, we will have to return, we would like to pay her a small portion of, of the overtime that she has worked during this election cycle. According to our records, she has worked a total of 450 hours of overtime from July 27th until, through the end of last month. And that's 450 hours that, you know, completely uncompensated. That is 173 hours more in overtime that she worked than she did in the 2016 election cycle. Now, we cannot pay her, I don't believe, we cannot pay her, as much as I'd like to, we can't pay her for all her 450 hours of the overtime she's worked. But she had, but I think that these COVID funds can be used and should be used to pay her for at least 173 hours, which is the, again, the increase in what she worked in 2016 to this year, 2020. The State Board of Elections has approved these funds to be paid in support of employee overtime. And so we would, again, because she's an agency director, we need the board's permission in order to, to pay that overtime to her, again, just a one-time payment.
Any, any questions, John?
Is, is there any problem with the way the labor law is written to allow you to pay overtime to exempt employee?
You mean, you mean as far as the county policy toward overtime?
No, I'm talking about federal.
Um, no, well, according to the CARES Act, no. Um, we ran, I mean, there's been an opinion issued by the State Board of Election that does approve these funds to be used toward overtime of.
For an exempt employee?
Yes. I mean, it doesn't specify exempt versus non-exempt, it's for everyone.
Well, we may want to check that because that is specified by the federal, federal law. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I don't think you want to be spending money on something that's illegal.
Again, well, that, that's why, and I don't know if our counties, all the counties, ask the State Board of Election to, you know, give us an opinion whether it's allowed to pay employee overtime. And as far as I know, that includes directors who would, you know, otherwise be exempt.
How, how much money are we talking about?
Well, Kelly's rate of pay is $30, let's see, $30.67 per hour. And so again, we're asking for 173 hours, actually it's 173.25 hours that she worked more in 2020 than she did in 2016.
Well, how much is that in dollar bills?
At the time and a half which everyone else gives, that would be $7,970.37.
Commissioner Langley.
In, in reference to Commissioner Revolt's question, if, if in fact that's a problem, but there is not a problem if you chose to do it as a bonus? Is that, is that, is that possible?
I'm not sure, I'd like to, my folks to provide some information on that.
I, I see Brian trying to say something, Brian?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, from a federal standpoint on whether you're an exempt or a non-exempt employee, you can pay exempt employees overtime if you want, it doesn't matter. You just have to pay non-exempt employees overtime. It would be considered a benefit, so I mean, you could do it, you could pay every exempt employee overtime if you wanted to. You're not required to by federal law, though, but you can.
And again, these are monies that, you know, we have to return to the state if we don't use them in some form or fashion. We have until the end of the year to do that. And we just think, from a chairman's perspective, you know, Kelly did such a great job throughout the entire election cycle. We'd like to reorder for that.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And according to our schedule, and Katie, I don't know how you did this, but you left us two minutes before the break. But we're going to go ahead and take a break, and we'll be back shortly. Okay, at this, at this time, we're going to open up a public hearing, but I need a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to go into a public hearing.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. Brian?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. The item on the agenda this evening is a petition to name a private road submitted by Charles Jarvis to name an easement of approximately three hundred and ninety feet in length. The subject easement connects to Muddy Creek Road in Beaufort County and is approximately one thousand, seven hundred and eighty feet north of the intersection of South Creek and Muddy Creek Road. I did provide a map in your packet showing that location. The petition is being submitted because there was an application for a third address to be served by the existing easement, which means a road name is required according to the addressing ordinance of Beaufort County. An advertisement was run in the Washington Daily News on November the twenty-fifth and December the second of 2020. Notices of a public hearing were posted in the Beaufort County Courthouse, the Aurora Town Hall, and the Aurora Volunteer Fire Station on December first of 2020. Beaufort County Ninety-One One Ordinance requires applicants to supply three proposed road names. Those submitted with a petition are listed below in order of preference, and staff at this point has determined that the applicant's first proposed name, Hopkins Jarvis Lane, does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County, nor do any sound-alikes exist to this Hopkins Jarvis Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve the applicant's proposed choice of Hopkins Jarvis Lane. I'll be glad to answer any questions afterwards.
Any questions? We did not have anybody register from the public. Is there anyone either inside or outside that wants to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, we'll move into the second public hearing. I need a motion to open that.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Brian?
Do you have a question, Randy? No problem. All right, the next item on the agenda is another private road name. The petition was submitted by Robert Weaver to name an easement of approximately one thousand five foot in length. The subject easement connects to Crettle Road in Beaufort County and is approximately six hundred and thirty feet east of Kelly Road, which intersects within C Highway Ninety-Nine. There's a map provided in your agenda packet. Now, this subdivision, and I know it does say was being submitted because it was an application for a third address. This one is, that's one. There are three parcels that were just recently created through a subdivision approval process. Per the Beaufort County Addressing Ordinance, Section Two, Item E, new subdivision roads, whether public or private, shall be named when created through the subdivision approval process. So this actual road name meets that criteria. An advertisement was run in the Washington Daily News on November the twenty-fifth and December the second per statutory requirements. Notices of a public hearing were posted in the Beaufort County Courthouse, the Bath Town Hall, and the Bath Post Office on December first, 2020. The E Ninety-One Ordinance requires applicants to provide three proposed road names. Those submitted with a petition are listed below in order of preference. I was seeing Puppy Drum Road was number one. Staff has determined that the applicant's first proposed name, Puppy Drum Drive, does not duplicate any existing road names within Beaufort County, nor do any sound-alikes exist. At this time, staff recommends the approval of the applicant's proposed choice of Puppy Drum Drive for that section of roadway.
We did not have anybody sign up for the public hearing as it relates to this naming. Is there anyone here inside or in the foyer? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now we're down to actually approving the name, so the first one is Jarvis Lane.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those, is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, the next one is Puppy Drum Drive. Can I have a motion to approve that name?
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of that name, raise your right hand. Thank you very much, Brian.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do each of these roads get a green sign?
They will have a green sign, that's correct.
And is it you that we see when a road has lost its green sign?
Sure.
Okay, Indian Trail on the west end, the sign is down, has been down some time.
Okay.
It's, you can see it, it's just down completely. It just kind of corroded off. That's at River Acres.
Got you.
Commissioner Walker, does the sign exist or has it been stolen?
The sign is there.
Okay.
Just needs to be re.
Okay, thank you.
Green cert.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, and I see you to everyone. I hope everyone has a great Christmas.
If you don't mind, will you take a wipe and?
Will do.
Thank you. And next is Tax Assessor Settlements, Mr. Parker.
Got it all cleaned for you, Mr. Parker.
Bobby, if you feel uncomfortable, you can take your mask off. I think there's enough distance between you and Randy there.
Okay, I'll turn my head for him. How you doing? Got two. William Kimball, Mr. Kimball offered, he settled at, he had four sixty-seven, seven twenty-three, and we settled at four twenty-seven, seven twenty-three. That's out in Cypress Landon.
Are we going to do them individually? Is that what we should be doing?
You have to do them individually.
Okay, so we're approving, your motion is to approve the first one, One Twenty-Six Santee Drive?
Right.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Second one was, the second to the motion, now Brian, was Randy. All right, Bobby?
The R H P E Reynolds LLC. We had an agreement of four fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. That was the one from five twenty-three, six ninety-five.
I'll move accept settled.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Did you vote, Stan? Was that for the approval? Okay. All right.
Mr. Francis Cisco has one that I think was pre-approved, and that's all I have on those.
Okay, you want to go ahead and give your comments? I've got, next item on the agenda is comments by you.
Well, I just want to say, this will be my last Commissioners' meeting. I've been to a number of them, and Mr. Richardson was the only Commissioner sitting here when I came aboard, so. I think you would, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Richardson would say. Anyway, I've been here twenty-seven years as a tax administrator. Been a challenge and rewarding period of my career. Three years as an appraiser and twenty-four years as a Beaufort County Tax Assessor. Has been a difficult decision to make that I am making. I know I'm making the right decision. I will miss my family at the tax office, but I'm going to generally be with my family home. Just one of the things that we, as a group, and I have a great group over at the tax office, that in 2014, when things were moving along with the FERC system, we won the Joseph E Hunt, Distinguished Jurisdiction Award to a smaller jurisdictions. This is a very nice award to give to the county and present to Beaufort County in recognition of outstanding achievement in the tax administration and public service, tax administration and public service. It was awarded by the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers November thirtieth, 2014. When I came on, I had, two of my staff members were already there, so that's taken a lot off of me, and they're still there, so I'm looking forward to being at home with my family and my six grandchildren and my dog. My dog takes, she'll take as much attention as my wife is, so I think my job will be awarded to take care of that position, so. Again, thank you Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, all you Commissioners for the things you've done for the tax office and things you've done for me, so I do appreciate that, whether you'll ever notice. Each and every one, I hope you have a Merry Christmas, and maybe I'll slip in once the vials come to a Commissioners' meeting, so I won't forget how.
Before you leave, I know we've got at least two that wants to say something. Commissioner Langley?
Bobby, when I came here in 2000, I found you to be a good and honorable man, and over these twenty years, I can still say that today. As you leave, and I thank you for your years of service, and it pleases me that you are leaving on your own terms. I think so many times, in any job, it is always good to leave on your own terms, so may God bless you and heaven always smile upon you, and I'll miss seeing your face.
Mr. Langley, I would also like to say that you've always said, friend to a friend. That meant a lot.
Any add?
Well, Bobby, I just wanted to say thank you for the job that you've done, thank you for the job that you've done for the citizens of Beaufort County for, I think you said, twenty-seven years. Very seldom do you hear people say anything bad about Bobby, and I can say honestly, every time I've been by your office, and I give you some hard times in there, I'd be the first to tell you, but I appreciate your friendship and I appreciate the job that you have done for the county and the citizens of Beaufort.
Mr. Booth, if you didn't give me a hard time, I wouldn't have enjoyed it.
Well, you know, I want to say this for both Bobby and the guy that's coming in to try to fill his shoes, being tax assessor is not an easy job. It is not an easy job. Public needs to keep that in mind.
And this year has been especially hard for me. I'm a person that gets stressed, and I, having to be stressed the whole year with the virus, thinking, well, somebody's going to come in with a virus and we're going to lose time, we're going to have to shut down, and we won't be able to catch back up. It's been an awful year for me, and I think it's a good year for me to get out. I'll turn eighty-five next year. I've worked sixty-one and a half years without taking a break between two jobs, so I know it's time for me to get out, so.
John?
There must be something besides work out there.
John?
Bobby, I can't talk about knowing you twenty-some years ago, but I can tell you that in the times that you and I have interacted, it's, first of all, it is very unusual for somebody to stay in one position for twenty-seven years in one job. The fact that you've layered this on to a previous job that was very long is just simply amazing and speaks an awful lot about your capabilities and your commitment to service. So I just want to say a thank you for all that you've done.
I left Raleigh, Missouri where our headquarters was for U.S. Geological Survey at three o'clock on Wednesday afternoon. They gave me a nice lunch, and I drove back to St. Louis, took an airplane, got back into Raleigh at ten o'clock, came to the tax office the next morning, and at that time, we opened at eight-thirty, and I got there a little early, and the lady ran me out of the tax office the first day. So I went out and settled the steps in the courthouse.
Stan?
Again.
Did you, Bobby, it's been wonderful having you here. I've appointed you many times. I was here in 1996 when you.
Were you?
Yeah, I was here. I was in my, I was in my first term.
I came here in 1993 as an appraiser.
Appraiser, but when you were appointed assessor, I was, I was there.
Yes.
Hook was on the board then. He was new. He was my junior, believe it or not. And it's difficult, and I appreciate you doing the job. And speaking of that, we still have a thing to settle between you and me, those five parcels, present use.
You need to come over and do your application, which you know you'd come back to do.
I had my, I did my application three years ago. That's a problem. We better move along here. Randy? Randy, you might want to take over.
Bobby, I hated it. My first day is your last day. I was certainly looking forward to working with you, but I can tell you, we spent a lot of time in closed sessions, standing out there in that little room over there, and we did a lot of talking that moms grilled.
We straightened out a lot of things.
We sure did. Nobody listened to us.
Nobody listened to us.
So I'm just saying, but you left the county better than you found it.
I hope so.
You did.
Okay, Brian?
Just for the board, you may have seen it, but just to let everybody know, Mr. Parker was featured in the North Carolina Association County Commissioners' County Quarterly Magazine this quarter, a really nice article on him and the work he's done in the FERC system and his years of service. If you haven't seen that, please take a look at that as well.
I guess I'm the only one left. Thank you for everything that you've done for the county. One of the ways that I measure an individual is based on the number of calls and complaints that I get as a Commissioner, and I've had very few, and the few that did have something to gripe about, I've called you immediately and set up an appointment, and you've been able to satisfy them. And I think that's pretty important as an elected official, is being able to satisfy the citizens. Sometimes the news may not be good, but I think you're entitled to have that interaction. So best of luck to you, and tell Lloyd it's not always as easy as it is tonight.
He's going to be all right.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we're down to.
One more time, I would like to thank you for all of you Commissioners, what you have done, and it's been a pleasure, and I am leaving on my own terms, and so, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. David, I guess you're up next.
This is, this is another case that we have before the Real Property Commission. In fact, we were supposed to have been up there at ten-thirty this morning, and we hopefully have settled this, if you will approve it tonight. This is, this case is an unimproved lot on Hickory, at Hickory Point lands subdivision. Tax value is determined, and you confirmed this when they first appealed it, at eighty-two thousand, nine hundred, ninety-three dollars. The value, the land was valued at seventy-eight thousand dollars, and it was valued put on a riprap of a bunch of rock, four thousand, nine hundred, ninety-three dollars. The subject lot is adjacent to the owner's. The subject lot is adjacent to the owner's other lot, which has an improvement on it. Purchase price in 2019 was $46,020 for the, for the subject lot. Tax assessor says he can settle the case for a value of $46,000, and it should be $46,020. He recommends that. I recommend it to you. I have notified the Real Property Commission that I believe we have a settlement, but that I had to get it approved tonight. So that's, that's what I recommend to you.
Yes.
I need to disclose something. I did the surveys for Muslenger on both of these lots. If you think I have a conflict, I won't vote on this. If you don't think I have a conflict, I'll be glad to give you my expertise.
I guess the question is, are you getting any cash in this transaction?
No, sir.
Okay. What is, is, does any of the other commissioners feel like there's a conflict?
No.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to approve? Got a motion by Booth and a second by Langley. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go to the next item there, David?
Yes, we have two other parcels of land that we have offers on. These are, uh, these are properties that have already been sold, and the county had to buy them in, so what the exercise is to get them back on the tax rolls. Um, and I have, uh, this is the initial off, offer on these, bid amount of $200 for each parcel. Same individual made that bid, and as you probably know, what frequently happens is someone comes along and raises a bid, and we end up doing, doing better than what was originally offered, which is $200 each for those two parcels. If you want any more information of that, I can give you, but I would recommend approval of that so we can move on and get these back on the tax rolls.
Any, any question? If, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Langley, second by John. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you. Let me, let me also say that I've, I've enjoyed working with Bobby for the last, I've lost track how many years I've been here, not many, but five or six, something like that. And he's, he's just a great guy to work with.
Thank you, David. Bobby, are you going to grow a beard now, like David? Okay, we're down to item Q, Department of Social Services. I hear some steps. Hey, Malang.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question from Mr. Rebholz. You pulled the lie. Is that, I, I went to Commissioner a few minutes ago, and you, but you pulled the lie issue? Okay.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Tonight, the Department of Social Services is requesting to advertise and field social worker IAT position and two social worker III positions. We're requesting to advertise all three of them in the month of December. Currently, only one of them is vacant, but the other two will become vacant by the end of December. They do protective services, and there's a lag time for getting the positions filled and then getting the people trained, so we're just trying to save some time and try and go ahead and get them posted. The other two positions are social worker III positions and adult services. One of those does full-time protective services for adults, and the other one provides case management for the state county special assistance. And they probably, all three, in reality, won't start until after January 1st.
Any, any discussion or motion?
These are vacant positions right now that are budgeted.
One is vacant right now. They're all three budgeted, and then the other two will become vacant by the end of December.
Do you remember what the percentage pay is from the state or the feds or whoever on these positions?
Um, the child, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head. The child welfare one is paid by different, all different federal and state funds, and we do charge some of that to MOE, our MOE, if we need to. The adult positions, some state funds, but very limited state funds that turns into being county funds. I don't know the percentage well.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second. Any, any further discussions? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is emergency management, Carney. She is really cleaning that off for you guys. Show them what to do. Show Carney what to do when he leaves. He's just jealous.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Board, thank you for allowing me to present to you, first of all, a budget amendment. It's actually for the EMS Medicaid cost settlement distribution. The county, if you would look at the attachment that came along with that agenda item, Finance, Ms. Anita fixed this attachment, and I'm going to use that to kind of explain how we came up with numbers here. So as you know, we apply for Medicaid leftover money, you might would say, that is called the Medicaid cost settlement. We were able to apply on behalf of Beaufort County EMS and our five departments. Everybody in the county with the exception of Washington, Washington applies for their own. This is for the 2018-19 year. We sent out requesting specific information. We got that information back. We coordinated the, the application through Maximus, and then those funds have been received. So the county was awarded a total of $447,586. If you break that down, the percentage that the, the state program tries to get back, Medicaid tries to get back is 67%. Of that 447,586, if, if you, the, the way the program is set up is it is to be your department's annual cost of operation and then per Medicaid-only call. So if you look in the middle of the chart where it says transports, I'll use Beaufort County as, as the first example. There were 247 Medicaid-only calls times the cost per trip. That cost per trip is taking the department's annual cost divided by the number of total trips per year. So you see that different for each department. So 247 times the cost per trip, which would give Beaufort County 338, 732, 33. Or, excuse me, there's Medicaid-only, the, the number times the cost per trip times 67.27%, gives us the 338, 732. That was done for each agency that you see, and if you notice, the total of that comes up to be 528,195. Well, we didn't get that much money. So we took the percentage they said that we would be based off of. The difference of that money has been received already in billing. We have received some money back as, as we would send, for instance, a $500 transport bill. Medicaid might decide, I'm going to pay you $150 on that. So we're going after the, the leftover money of that. So there were some costs to the county. If you look under the amount to distribute, and then I'll bring it all together. Total funds from the state, 447,586. We use Maximus to actually write the application for us. That was a $1,000 charge to the county. We added a 5% county admin fee for the total coordination of things, both through our office and especially Finance. And then the, the program is through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and they just hit us with a percentage fee. So when you look at those fees together, we take the total we received, which was 447, 586, minus those fees, gives a total amount to distribute of 410, 778. Is everybody with me? So if we go back now to the center where it says transports, we take that Medicaid-only, uh, for Beaufort County was 247, times our cost per trip, which gave us the, times 67.27%, gave us 338, but we didn't have that much money. So Finance took and, and did an equal drop-down ratio, which would be comparative for everyone. So the final recommended numbers that you see before you is Beaufort County for its trips would receive 263,432, Chaco Innity 43,958, Aurora 38, 099.85, Broad Creek 60,299.11 and Pine Town 4,988. Now, the county, just for clarification, that would be each department's allocation. If you look at county distribution total at the very bottom, it's our prorated share, which we just did the calculation on, of 263,432, plus those county admin fees, the $1,000, um, the, the 5%, and the 5% would come up to a total county allocation of 285,819. So my request, and be glad to answer any questions on this, is to approve budget amendments which would allow us to disperse these monies in this amount to all agencies.
Question, Carney, and you may not know this answer, but maybe you could come back to us. When you look at the number of calls for Medicaid, it's fifth, I'm sorry, 14% of the total. Is that kind of a, what we see statewide?
When you say 14% of the total?
The, the 594 Medicaid-
Okay.
Only calls-
Yes.
Divided by the total was 14%.
Okay.
Is that-
So what we have from our billing company, they give us a breakdown. We have Medicaid-only, Medicare-only, Medicare/Medicaid, and then other insurance. And I could get you that exact breakdown. They would only allow us to utilize this program with 100% Medicaid-only.
I got you.
So there's other calls that are Medicaid-related, that were Medicaid/Medicare or, or partial Medicaid with other insurance. We couldn't utilize any of that data. It had to be 100% Medicaid-only.
Any, any questions of Carney? John?
Carney, under total trips-
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that emergency, non-emergency? What's, what is-
So for-
Restate for total trips.
Yes, for everyone except Chaco Innity, it is emergency trips. Chaco Innity operates a non-emergency truck as well. And up until this current year, their budget has really, their operating budget has been one operating budget that did both of those. They've received funds from different ways, but they operated out of one budget. This program will only be applied to emergency calls. So if you look at Chaco Innity's total trips of 1575, first you take the non-E transports out, and then you, you broke it down to Medicaid-only. That's how it got to 114. So for everybody other than Chaco Innity, it's emergency trips. Chaco Innity's number is two different kinds of trips. And that'll, that'll be getting improved in the next years because we've asked for it to be separated.
Okay. So can you help me understand Beaufort County's cost per trip compared to the other agencies?
Yes. In going for, we've, we've given everybody the opportunity to show us your total operating budget. Remember, for Beaufort County, we have the responsibility of managing the EMS system for the entire county. That's one function. And then we do emerg, we, we actually provide that out of our three transport trucks and two QRVs. So there's complete operating budget, which puts the EMS system in place by general statute, which, which helps go towards our EMS oversight and everything. But there's, there's that admin piece of keeping our system plan up and all of that. And then there is the providing of the emergency calls themselves. So when you look at our total operating budget, it is absolutely everything for EMS in our operating budget. Just as the other departments took their operating budget, which would be, would, you know, per department and, and put that in place, but ours is more expensive because we're, we're doing two tasks with that, but the tasks are still associated to emergency medical service.
So the budget, the, the cost per trip includes all the administrative stuff that the other agencies don't have, but the reimbursement's based on the number of trips, not total cost?
Well, it's, it's everybody's total cost. Our total cost is just more because as the county, we have that responsibility.
Do you think that's fair, doing it that way?
Yeah, I mean, it's-
I mean, obviously you do.
Yes, sir.
But other agencies aren't getting that share of the reimbursement for trips.
Everybody is getting a share compared to, the exact share compared to their operating cost.
If you, if you take the cost for the quick response unit, and I'm trying to recall, but it's roughly $500,000.
QRVs are 250?
A piece.
Operating a QRV roughly for the county is 250,000, and EMS truck is a half a million, 500,000.
Okay, and we have two of them, so that's 500, and that really provides additional resources to people like Pine Town, Amptica Beach, I mean, so if you take that 500 and you divide it by the county's number of 15, 1,518, that pushes our cost up 329 dollars per trip. If you take 500,000.
Well, that's all part of the total.
Well, but I mean, that, that, I thought your question was centered around the cost per trip, why ours, why it was higher for the county?
Yeah. But I mean, Chaco Innity's got one of those too. So does, so does Broad Creek.
I think Manager Aligas has a-
Yes, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, just, and also because of the administrative function that the county provides in the whole system, these squads are now eligible for that reimbursement. They would not be eligible for that reimbursement if it were not for the county. So this is new money for them that they have never gotten before and would not be eligible for if they were operating on their own and not underneath our structure.
Yeah, this is one thing, the consultant, when we had the study done, pointed out to us that that was one of the shortcomings, the way we were operating. We were not, this money was being left in Raleigh.
And I think Commissioner Rebholz, you're concerned, the more efficient you run, the less money you get back. That's how the system is set. I mean, that's how the Medicaid cost settlement system is, so it's just on your, your operating cost.
Well, don't try to get logic out of that. It's not there in Medicaid.
And, and second comment on that, to, to, to play with that, this is not guaranteed money every year. So if someone were to say, okay, well, I'll be inefficient with my operations so I get more money, that would be the year they wouldn't have any money. So it's in everyone's best interest, which is in ours as well, to be as efficient as you can with all your operations.
And this is still subject to the Medicaid audit, right?
The, the audits have been completed now, is that right? So, so we're ready for disbursement?
Well, yeah, as far as we know, the audits are complete. You never know whether the audits are complete or not. You think they're complete, so you could be sitting in here one night having to roll some of this money back. I doubt it, but it's possible.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions.
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the state has mentioned over and over again, is this because North Carolina administers the Medicaid funds for North Carolina?
Mike, is this because North Carolina administers the Medicaid funds?
Yes, these are North Carolina funds that, that are, it's remaining funds of North Ca, that are allocated for this year's North Carolina Medicaid.
Right, and this check came from the state, and the audit comes from Columbia, South Carolina.
The audit was done by the North Carolina Department-
The audit was done by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services.
Right, but there's other audits out there, is my point.
I'm not aware of any additional audits.
I am. I am. Been there and done it. The other question is, it sounded like that if there's a split payment on a trip that you make, for instance, you make a trip, and something paid part of it, and Medicaid paid another little part of it, that you can't use those as a trip, that that's not listed in the number of trips you made here?
We actually originally utilized those numbers, and the audit made us remove them.
Made them remove them on combined pay?
Yes, they had to be Medicaid-specific.
They'd be exclusively Medicaid. Okay, all right.
We actually had those numbers in and were asked to remove them.
Okay.
Like those people that have no supplements? If they use your service, they can't use that for as a payment?
Oh, sure they can. This has nothing to do with what the patient can or can't do. It's just what we can recruit. Yes, sir.
I have one more question.
The total number for the total cost of EMS in Beaufort County, 5.3 million, is that number one change, or for other expenses and things that are not in here that should be in here?
That would, for the 2018-19 year, that was what the numbers are. I mean, that is the total number provided, yes.
And this is a calendar year we're talking about?
It's a budgetary year, fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay. Any other questions before we do the budget amendment? Entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
All right, is there a second? All right, got a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, all right.
I would just like to thank our Finance Director. She and her staff have put a lot of work into getting these things together through the whole system, getting that to that place. Second item, come before you, with an opening in our EMS department, we have, have one full-time opening that we are requesting to fill. The opening is vacant now. It was a leadership position, it was a captain position, that resigned. So I'm only asking to fill to our full-time number, but with that, I want to be able to replace the captain, which would probably be an internal promotion. We will advertise it outside by county policy. And if it's filled within, I want to be able to fill the vacant EMS position, or either hire that person from the outside.
Go ahead.
Would it increase it?
It's, I think your question is to increase our numbers, it is keeping our FTOs exact the number that has been mentioned.
Any other questions of Carney? Entertain a motion?
I've got one.
Okay.
When you have a person exit, leave for whatever reason, do you do an exit survey?
Yes. Yes, we try to, I say yes, we schedule it with Human Resources, and we try to get that person in before they actually leave. There are times that they end up leaving before that happens, but when we get the official notice, the correct amount of time, we get that in on the day they're actually working to go in and do it.
Ed, you cut your mic. Is there a motion to approve the staffing?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you, Carney.
Thank you.
You go, Carney.
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank the young man right here for doing such a good job doing this COVID-19. You're doing exceptionally good job every day.
You've been getting an email with a letter with Chris's name on it for 267 days, but it does represent a large team working all across the county. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Chris. I usually do a little daily thing and I hit some of the highlights, and when they start asking questions, I tell them to go to your, go to your page. I do the same thing as Will. I do the same thing as Will, but when they ask me, just the facts, ma'am, just the facts, that's all I can say. Okay, the next item is economic development. Martin, if you will step out.
Tonight, what I'd just like to do is bring you up to speed on the 5C NC Cannery Project that we've been working on. Alpha Life Enrichment Center are the ones that are establishing the cannery. And the first point would be that the cannery is actually going to be an industrial facility serving farmers and citizens to can excess produce. And I think in the past, we talked about it maybe more as a facility that individuals could use. Individuals can bring produce to the cannery, but it will be the cannery staff that will process it. This is done to avoid situations where you might have some contamination from individual citizens not knowing quite how to use the facility, and also to make the facility more efficient. Unfortunately, the funding process we were going to use before, which was the CDB-GCV program, the money was moved out of that, and so they closed the program. And however, we have been told that potentially with new federal programs, that that might be reopened, and so we are to continue our work. There are other sources as well of funding that we'll be going after. The project, the cannery, will have employed about five people, full-time people, average pay of about 35,000. Under the CDBG program, we were targeting those jobs at low-income individuals, which I think we'll continue to do, given the purpose of the cannery. There'll be one manager, one supervisor, three operators, and supplemental staff as needed. So again, the scope of the project is to serve low-income families, farmers, and mediating institutions that serve the low-income community through sustainable and accessible farming. The estimated cost is 1.3 million dollars, and the concept is to have a vertically integrated operation, not that the cannery would own everything, but the idea of working with the farmers to increase their revenue. The cannery cans the produce, and then it's sold on to various things like churches, schools, food centers, co-ops, et cetera. So you're kind of working on both sides of the food issue. Over the fall, we had a rise 2019 from ECU, Creative Business Plan for the cannery, and also because of the grant situation, we got them to put together a grant directory of any grants that would be applicable for the 5C cannery. We've also, or Alec, should I say, has put together a list of equipment needed, plant layouts, building and site, which we're trying to finalize. One issue on the site is, we did want to put it over near the airport in the opportunity zone. Unfortunately, due to the nature of the project now, with the industrial nature of the project, having semi-trailers on Airport Road was not, the airport didn't like that idea, nor did the city. So we're looking at the industrial park at the moment to potentially have a site there, which is more advantageous for using semi-trailers. Also, Alec is working with a lot of the other institutions to get their guidance and intuition about this project. North Carolina Department of Public Health, North Carolina Department of Agriculture, NC A&amp;T University, Mid East Commission, and North Carolina State University, all of which have various professional resources that Alec can make use of. The Alec Board of Directors will serve as the cannery board, but at this moment, a Board of Advisors is being put together, both technical, legal, and accounting to assist them in the operation of the cannery. That's all I have at this point. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
What kind of vegetables would you be canning?
Every type. It just depends on the season, everything from beans, and broccoli, and corn, and it's basically looking at the vegetables that are grown in this area, and then canning them, and actually trying to do a better job than in the stores and what have you. Doing our research, we found out that an average can of vegetables in the store only has 65% vegetables, so we're going to try and improve that.
Would the labeling be promoting Beaufort County?
It could. At the moment, it's got the 5C cannery label on it, but Beaufort County is one of the five counties. At the, you know, the facility will be located here, and we assume therefore that also the people applying for the jobs would probably come from this area.
Let's raise one issue. Yes. The Alec Board of Directors will serve as the Board of Directors. The county's going to have over a million dollars of liability in this. I really think we should have some commissioner serving on this. We need somebody that, from the county, to look after the county's interest in this thing.
Yeah, if, if the CDBG program reopens, then yeah, I think that's-
So when the time comes, I realize this is not the time, you're not far enough along, but I think we should have its own Board of Directors, which can be the Alec Board, plus our representative, or representatives, whatever we decide to do.
Mr. Chairman, and Martin and I have had this conversation, but I do need to say it to the board. I have some concerns about the structure of the program. The county, if we are in a grant opportunity situation, as was discussed at the last meeting with Commissioner Richardson, the county's on the hook for that. And the concern is that there be a way to claw those funds back if there's an adverse event that occurs.
Absolutely.
The concern I have is that, right now, the way it's structured, the nonprofit doesn't have any money in this thing. It's all grant money. A non, we don't have anything to claw back if we're clawing back against a nonprofit, an LLC that has no assets. I would suggest that if we move forward, the county ought to own the land, the county ought to own the building, if we're on the hook for it. There ought to be some thing that we work out along those lines. Again, my concern is that if things go south, and we always have to look for that, we don't anticipate it, but it's only the right thing for us to do on our due diligence, is to make sure that there's an exit strategy. And an exit strategy would be that there's a building that's there that's available, that's owned by the county, because you're on, you're on the hook for it. Now, if the nonprofit, if the LLC wants to guarantee, do a personal guarantee for those funds, then I think that's okay, like we've done with other companies, where they said, yeah, we got an LLC, but we're willing to personally guarantee the money. You've just got to make sure that the county's covered in an opportunity like this. Thank you.
Would the county deed the building back to Alec once the, once the risk of the CDBG going south?
As you and I discussed in our meeting, I would see the county entering into a long-term lease agreement with an organization that would ensure that that facility would be available, and if there's something where it goes south, I mean, I don't think that the county being on the hook, giving properly away, is the way to do that.
Well, we can do a deed of trust on the whole thing, because we're going to have to pay for the whole thing. If it goes south, then we've got the whole thing. We can reorganize it and start again, or do, do whatever we would like to do.
The, you'd only be liable to the CDBG probably for about three years, and once that's gone, then you have no liability, once the North Carolina Department of Commerce signs off on it. So I can see the county, you know, having, as you said, a deed of trust for those three years, or whatever it be, five years, 10 years, whatever.
But that doesn't mean-
But at some point-
We don't still have the equity yet, I mean-
You don't have the equity, and it would be a state grant that was the equity.
It would be a state grant, but we've put up some land that we haven't been paid for.
The land is in the state grant.
I know, but who pays for the land?
The, through the grant, the grant would pay for the land.
Well-
All the costs are included in the grant.
This only becomes a problem if it heads south.
Right, and I'm just saying that I agree with Brian, but I think there needs to be some, at some point, when the county no longer is, can be detrimentally affected, that then it should pass back to Alec in this case.
Well, I'm looking at longer than three years.
Yeah, I can understand that. I just don't think it should be infinitum, because then you've got all the, you know, like I have at the skills center, you've got all the maintenance and what have you of that if you own it. So I can, you know, I think for the first three to five, whatever years, that you decide that yes, to cover your risk, you should, but at some point, you, I think you want to probably get, I'll get rid of it, but you need to, you want to get rid of the responsibility of maintaining it, I guess.
Well, one of the-
If it's successful, yes.
One of the things I've seen done, Martin and David, is that they could sign an agreement not to pledge those assets.
Yeah.
You know, as long as we're on the hook.
Yeah.
That way you keep, you keep them from putting a mortgage on it to somebody else.
The first deed of trust would take care of that.
Yeah.
First mortgage would take care of that, yeah, absolutely.
But I don't know whether the grant program would allow somebody to have a first deed of trust. Do you know?
No, we've done this, we've factored ourselves, yes, we've done this.
Yeah. I mean, I think the concern is, you know, if Alec has no money, and the only asset is the building and the equipment, I think the concern is, without something like Brian's saying, very explicit, that we own it already, that, you know, going through a lawsuit and all that would be difficult. So I agree with him that the, initially, it probably should be owned by the county if we get a CDBG, but at some point, I think it needs to then revert back, once the county's not in any risk.
Right.
Revert back to Alec.
Any, any, any other question? Yes, Brian.
Martin, do you have a place in mind, a physical place?
Yeah, you know the industrial park?
Right.
Okay, so you know where IMT now is? It's basically right across the street, on the corner, on the corner there. And the lot actually works out well, because the building can be on one side and then potentially parking. There's a ditch in there that you really don't want to deal with.
Thank you. Thank you, Martin.
I brought them to the lab, you know, once we got to use them. Okay.
You may need to bring in another can, as many people as we had up there tonight hyping.
Thank you.
Financial report. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. Just give Melissa Namet to bring that up. I'm seeing it on my screen, but not on the TVs, Melissa. I don't see it on the, oh, do I need to do something? Sorry. So we're going to start off, as we do each time, with sales tax, just to see what's going on. It's been kind of up and down for us during the pandemic. You can see, this is the chart we've been using for the last couple months, that shows the last six years of sales tax collections for Beaufort County. And that green line that predominantly runs at the top of the graph there is the most recent year, calendar year 2020. And we just got notification of our September sales distribution that we will receive later in December this month, and it is going to be 907. in December this month, and it is going to be $97,282. So sales tax still running really high. Um, can't really explain it, that'd make a lot of sense to me, but, um, we're happy that it's where it is. This is a schedule here of a budget, the actual comparison, just to kinda see if we're running a surplus or a deficit when we compare the actual collections to the budget. And of course, we've only got three months there of actual collections listed, and that's because, remember, and remind y'all each time, there's a three-month lag in the sales tax collections. So even though it's December, we've only collected July, August, and September sales tax. And, um, as you can see there, we're running a very good, um, difference or surplus of $909,000 for those first three months of the fiscal year. And this also demonstrates, the schedule shows what I was mentioning to you last month about the severe cuts we made to the budget for sales tax. Um, if you'll think back to February, March, April, May timeframe of this year, when we were actually developing the budget, it was the very start of the pandemic. We did not know what sales tax was gonna do. We thought it was prudent to listen to the economists and decrease our sales tax numbers, our budgetary numbers by 20, 25%. So you can see there, like for July, even though we actually collected $804,652, the previous year, we only budgeted to collect $603,489, but we actually collected $973. So we're running a big surplus there, and these surplus funds is what makes us think that we, we can hopefully come to in January and do something about that pay plan that's been hanging out there for several years now. So I have been also tracking just our performance against the states, just because I think it's really interesting, you know, a little bit of Beaufort County, we about performed the state every single month, um, during this pandemic in our sales tax, except this last one that we're just getting ready to get, we're slightly less, um, which, which is a good thing. And then our, uh, abalone tax collections are starting to roll in very nicely. Um, we make most of those collections during the month of December, first week of January, but we do have some collections in November, so I thought I would take a look at what our collections are through November 30th of this year compared to November 30th of last year. And you can see that we are slightly ahead or above where we were at this time last year. So that's another good indicator for us, that we're going to hit our budgetary revenue numbers. Because remember, sales tax and abalone taxes are 65% of our budget, of our revenues. So we can get some of the little small ones wrong, but as long as we hit these and make our numbers, we should be in really good shape. Um, the last slide I have to show with you, uh, share with you tonight is, I was trying to, you know, see if I could figure out any impact that, or what impact the hiring freeze has had, um, on our financials, and it's been a challenge, um, in the sense that I really don't know, we, we have realized the savings, let me just run through the numbers. First of all, we've had 10.8 payrolls out of 26 payrolls so far this year, which is 41.5%. That's where I'd expect us to be as far as spending for our salaries and benefits, and we are at 40.7%. So that eight tenths of a percent equates to about $140,183 in savings and salaries and overtime for the county. Now, the thing I'm struggling with is how much of that is truly related to the hiring freeze and how much of that is just normal attrition where we have lapped salaries due to employee turnover that we have every year? So that's the thing that's very difficult for me to measure. However, it's good news that we are running slightly below budget on the expenditure side for salary, salaries and overtime and benefits, and we will realize a little bit of savings there to add back to fund balance. Any questions?
Questions? Uh, Anita, would you mind sending email and those graphs, charts to us?
Yes.
All right. Uh, if no questions, we'll let you go into the second item.
Yes, my second item is on page 283 of your agenda. So I'm here tonight requesting that you allow me to continue the use of a temporary part-time employee due to the finance department being down two staff members. Um, so normally, the finance department has a staff of seven. We currently have five, and that's due to one employee being out on medical leave and the vacancy that I've had in the staff accountant position since June. Um, you know, it's a really busy time of year for us. We are looking at starting to do our year-end reporting. Um, we've got to do W2s, 1099s, there's been a whole lot of reporting related to, uh, the CARES funding, and I just really need this part-time person to assist us to fill this gap that we have by having this vacancy and this employee on leave. This is an overall savings to the county, um, in lieu of filling that vacant staff position account by using this temporary part-time help, the county will save over $22,000. So that part-time person is not absorbing the work of those two employees by any means. I've had to ask my staff to do a lot more work than they, um, would normally be required to do. I've asked them to do work outside of their normal duties, and they've all stepped up and done that very nicely. And I'm really proud of them, and I'd like to publicly thank them for that, but I do feel like we need some additional, a continuation of the help that you've allowed me to have the last 12 weeks. I need for that to continue.
Motion to approve. Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Those opposed? Six, one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Uh, Brian? You're.
Six, one?
Hmm?
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, did you rather I fill the position? Oh, okay.
From what I remember, you, you came in, you told us, you left for just like 12 weeks, and I just, I think, and you come back to bed on, and you put your hands.
So I probably didn't do a really good job of explaining myself. The initial 12 weeks was to cover my medical leave, and I'm back, and I had no way of knowing that I'd have another employee go out on medical leave.
Well, it was pretty tough for a week, and I.
Next time, I will ask for it perpetually. Thank you.
I didn't vote for it. I didn't, I didn't vote for it this time.
Okay, uh, next item is the CARES Act fund distribution to the remaining municipalities. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, the county received what's called CARES Act funding that was passed down from the federal government to the state government, and the state allocated that out. Initially, the county received a disbursement, then there was some additional work at the state level that put out some additional money, and there was a requirement that 25% of the entire funding go to municipalities. Um, so out of that, the county received a total allotment of a little over $1.9 million, and $481,666 were required to be dispersed to municipalities. You've seen that spreadsheet before where we allocate that out to the municipalities. What we found in doing this, um, we put together reimbursement agreements with the municipalities, and they all signed off on those. We were given criteria from U.S. Treasury and from the pandemic office on what you could do with this money. Um, the easiest reimbursement for everybody was to reimburse public safety salaries. Um, and that is essentially what all the municipalities have done who had that opportunity. The town of Aurora does not have public safety. They no longer have a police department. So they were struggling in finding things to, to use the money for, um, and we certainly didn't want them to go spend willy-nilly. Um, the town of Pantega was the same way. They don't provide public safety. Um, the town of Bath has an EMS contract that they were able to apply that to. The town of Bellhaven has public safety. Chalkowinnity has public safety. Washington has public safety, and Washington Park has an EMS contract. So they were able to show that really clearly, and we've cleared that. So there are, there's funding in the amount of $18,583.07 that was to go to the town of Aurora. There's $6,412.98 that was required to go to Pantega. What I am asking you to do, and I've had a conversation with both of the clerks from, from these municipalities, I'm asking you to allow us to recoup that money and draw it back to the county. That will allow us, and in our agreement with them, they agreed that if they didn't spend it by a certain amount of time, we could recoup it. What we intend to do is recoup that money, draw it back to the county, apply it to our public safety, because we have plenty of public safety expenses, and then turn around and ask the board to give that money directly to them as an allocation. That way, they can use it as they need to use it. Um, it allows us to close out the grant, and it allows us to do right by the municipalities. Um, so I'm asking you that, I'm asking, you can see in there, that, that, uh, you allow us to claw that money back and then, and then, uh, award those remaining CAREF, CARES Act funding, which would essentially be a direct allocation to the town of Aurora in the amount of $18,583.07, and the town of Pantega's $6,412.98. Thank you.
Brian, Aurora's got a full-time EMS.
It's a nonprofit. It's not through the town. The town's not paying that money. They get a direct allocation from taxes.
Okay. But having said that, I guess, then the, then the policing services that are provided are provided by us.
They are. They're provided by the sheriff's office.
Not by them.
That's correct.
So we're the ones that have incurred that expense.
Sir?
We're the ones that are incurring that expense.
You, you, you are. Uh, and, and essentially, what we're saying is, we wanna try to do right by the municipalities and, and get them their money, so we're gonna apply it and close the grant.
But the other municipalities had that expense.
Sir?
The other, the other municipalities had that expense.
They did.
Okay.
And we, we helped, we helped the municipalities as best we could find appropriate expenditures.
Right. I don't know why we just don't use it ourselves.
Um, we are required.
So we're the ones that have got the expense.
Well, we, we have, we have been able to use funds that were given to us directly. Um, I would feel bad if we did not help Aurora out and help Pantega out when we have the opportunity to do that. And, and I think it's a way for us to do that and close it out. We're, we're trying to do right by the municipalities.
Ed?
Mr. Maney, what you're, what you're stating is, if, if we don't do what you asked us, the town of Aurora and Pantega is gonna lose that money anyway, is, because they had to send it back to the.
They potentially could lose that money, and we would claw it back and use it. Um, or they could go on a spending spree right now and buy stuff that they didn't need.
Okay.
Um, so it, it gives them time to do what they need to do, um, and it puts money where we're supposed to put money.
So it's not that they don't need it, it's that, it's that they haven't used it as of yet?
They have struggled with, Pantega has struggled with finding a way to use those funds as guidance from Treasury has said you had to.
Okay.
So they could, they could go buy $6,000 worth of, um, disinfectant wipes if they wanted to.
Okay.
Um, but that might not be what they need. Um, so, again, we're just trying to be, we're trying to do right by the municipalities, although sometimes we get accused of not doing that.
Any other question? Entertained a motion? Got a motion? Is there a second?
I'm second.
And a second? Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six, one?
One.
Did you?
Anita's got more comments. I couldn't do this good job.
Wait, was, was yours opposed? Okay.
Post vote.
Six, one?
Who's one? John.
John.
I'm not so sure I shouldn't be up with John.
Well, I, I, I think really what Brian's saying is, is of the money that came in, we allocated it, I believe was based on, was it population? Within side the city limits?
It's totally allocated across specific hues today, and using for that, I don't know if I would give them a free ride. That's how we do it.
Okay, you wanna get to the next item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a request to the board in what we've called, what we've entitled, a COVID-19 essential worker payment. Um, as you're seeing the agenda item for the last nine months, county employees have worked to provide the essential services despite the public crisis. Um, we've got folks who are working on front lines in public health and public safety. Um, we consider all of our employees essential employees. Um, we did close to the public for public access for a very short amount of time until we could get, um, safety measures in place, glass up, um, and social distancing marketing, but other than that, we have been open for business and, and doing what we've gotta do to provide services to the citizens of Beaufort County. Um, out of the CARES Act funding, um, we would, we're making a request that you, that you do a one-time payment to, as it's listed out below, it's a $600 for full-time employees that were hired before July 1st. Essentially, we broke it up, except for the first half of the year, if you were here, you got the full amount. If you were hired after July 1st in a full-time capacity, it would be 300, and then a hundred-dollar bonus for, uh, part-time employees who worked at least 216 hours between that time period. We would also include in that, and, and I didn't have that in here right now. Anita has accounted for it on the spreadsheet, but we were going back and forth with elections on, on what they were gonna do. As you recall, the state of North Carolina adjusted poll workers, election day workers, they adjusted their salaries, the state gave them a $100 one-time payment on top of whatever the counties were paying them. So in conversations with Kelly, uh, what they would like to do is the same thing for their, uh, one-stop workers. Include them in with our part-time folks at $100. So what we're asking you to do is, is take that amount, it would be a total of $268,396, uh, and provide that to county employees based upon the schedule that's listed, including, uh, the one-stop election workers under part-time. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Questions?
I have a question. This is money that if we don't spend it, we're gonna have to give it back?
Um, we have allocated the funds that are required for us to public safety reimbursement. So like we've done with the other allocation, um, we've taken, and, and the reason we did that was, this isn't allowable expenditure, just like Kelly and the Board of Elections said, it isn't allowable expenditure under the COVID funds. But what we did early on with our money was we applied it to reimburse ourselves for public safety salaries. It was the cleanest and easiest way to do it. The state auditors told us, if you could do it that way, do it, because then they come down and they, you show them payroll and it, it clears out. Then you don't get into an argument about, well, is this really a public safety expense or is this really a COVID expense? So we did that on purpose so that we would make a clean audit for them. Then, when we came back to y'all each time, we've said, we feel like this is within the, um, the scope and the, and the spirit of the law in which they wanted you to use those funds, so, um, but to answer your question directly, if you didn't know that money would roll, that money would end up in fund balance.
John?
How much of that money is still there?
Okay. Um, so of the total allocation that the county received, 1.44998, $1,444,998, you, you allocated $50,000 for the annexed building at the Health Department. You allocated $34,415 to DSS for additional laptop and, and so that they could do some remote work as they needed to. You allocated $185,000 to put a generator on this building and to put a generator on the admin building that were non-generated. You allocated $169,335 for HVAC work, which included ionization and UV filters on all of our HVAC systems across the county. Um, and all those ionizers are in place. We are waiting on an additional shipment of the UVs filters, um, but all the ionizers are in place. You allocated $89,000 to put the generator at the Health Department, because the Health Department is not generated, and we did not get funding from FEMA when we submitted that previously. You allocated a half a million dollars, uh, for broadband matching funds so that you could work with a, with a company, um, and we'll, we'll get into that next meeting because we received that, those proposals back. Um, if you, if you approve this tonight, you'll spend $268,396 on this, which will leave a remaining $148,852, which we anticipate coming back to you to ask you to allocate that money to do duct cleaning for all of the HVAC systems in the county. We, we did that in the, in the courthouse, um, and, and it's amazing what a, a HVAC duct looks like, um, after it's been there for 15 years and not cleaned. And this is a process where they go back in and, and. And this is a process where they go back in and clean them and sanitize them, and they look like they're brand new. So that would be what the final allocation we would suggest to you at the next meeting to come back at.
But that 1.4 million or whatever it was, was satisfied with the feds by using it for public safety.
That is correct. That was the...
So we're double counting money, as far as I'm concerned?
No, we're not really double counting it. We showed them that we used it to reimburse salaries, because that was the easiest and cleanest way. And then that, all that money essentially rolls to fund balance, and then we came back to you and said, in the spirit of the intent of this money, these are the things we're recommending you to do. That way, we didn't have to go to the state and say, we spent it this on this little bit, we spent this on this little bit. It was just a very easy and clean way to do that.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six one. Do you need a separate one for the budget amendment, or... Okay. All right, Brian, your next one?
The second item I have for you is what's called the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program. This is a program that is funded by the General Assembly and the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation that helps the 20 coastal counties in North Carolina work on coastal resiliency, adaption planning, local government capacity funding, and to support proactive, sustainable, and equitable approach to coastal resiliency planning and project implementation. So it's out there. We're allowed to apply for this, because we are one of the 20 counties that are considered coastal counties. There's four phases of this project. First, they give you assistance, direct technical assistance, to do a community engagement process, to do a risk and vulnerability assessment, and then develop a resiliency project portfolio. If you are approved into that program and you get through those first two, then you become eligible for assistance in phases three and four, which would be, they would help you with engineering and design of a project, a shovel-ready project, and then they would help you with some financial assistance to do that. So it's about resiliency and determining what are some of the things that Beaufort County can do due to coastal storms and the impact that we have from those. So we recommend your approval in moving forward with that. The Mideast Commission has agreed to prepare the application for us at a cost of $3,500. We have those funds available in our professional line item. It's actually the county manager's budget for professional services. So we would propose using that. You have the contract with Mideast on page 291 through 294, which has the scope. And then you have a fact sheet on the resilient coastal communities program. So we recommend your approval in moving forward.
Are we entertaining a motion? You have a motion by Booth? Is there a second? Second by John?
I've got a question.
Any discussion?
Can the City of Washington apply separately for this? Or is this strictly county?
I think it's county, because it says the 20 coastal counties, so it's not a municipal piece. But now, this is a community-driven process, so it's developing a portfolio of different projects, so the municipalities would essentially be included in that as you go through that process.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six one. Your next one, Brian? Parks and Recreation?
So this is a request for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant. The 2020, 2021 Part of Grant cycle has just been announced. There's an application review deadline of April the 1st, and then you find out in the fall of '21 whether you're accepted or not. As you are aware, the county received a part of grant to develop Wright's Creek property into a water access area to enhance the existing North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission boating access and allow additional public access in the area. It's been the board's policy initiative for many years to increase public access to waterways. We received that part of grant to go in and do that work. We ran into some issues with getting the grant completed, and about the time we were heavy into starting to do the work, we also received a grant from the state to do an erosion control study. We did not want to go in and spend the Part of money on doing the work until we got that study completed, that engineering study done, and found out what those recommendations were. The recommendation out of the engineering study was to put in a ripravment on a portion of that property to help control for erosion. We talked to Part of about that, and we said, you know, we don't want to spend your money and then have an issue later on. We asked them, could we turn the money back in and not be penalized for it? They said yes, and that they would also, if we were approved in a new Part of grant, you could use Part of money to build that ripravment and then develop the rest of the property. So that's what this is, it is open. The application period is now open. We are recommended that we look at a Part of project in the amount of a half a million dollars. And that would construct the revetment and develop the property with additional items such as a kayak canoe launch, a fishing gear, picnic shelter with tables and walking trails. There will not be restroom facilities there. Those are just, it's a little too far out for restroom facilities and something that would not be in our best interest to have to look after. So that would require a matching, you have to match Part of dollars dollar for dollar. So it would be 250 and 250. The Mideast Commission has agreed to put the grant together for us again in the amount of $2,500. Again, those funds are available in the current budget under professional services. So what I'm asking you to do, you also have that contract available in the agenda item on page 298 to 301, which shows some scope of services. Then you have some additional information about the Part of grant itself. So what I'm asking you to do is approve that attached contract with the Mideast, and if awarded, commit a quarter of a million dollars for the required match under this program. Thank you.
You've heard the recommendation questions? Randy?
I've drawn a blank. Where is Wright's Creek?
It's probably, what, five miles before you get to the main part of Pampoka Beach, on the left. That's where Hopkins Seafood used to be on that property. Any other questions?
Brian, in the original proposal last year, was there any assessment done of utilization?
An assessment of utilization? There was. There was...
Before I spent a half minute, do we have any idea how many people are going to want to use this?
There was a public, there was a public participation process that you have to go through with Part of initially. So there was a lot of work done. It was before my time. So there was work done to do that, to get public input and to see, but to say to you, we have 1,000 people who said they'll use it, I can't tell you that. I don't know.
Well, as I recall, when we decided to back out of this, I mean temporarily, Commissioner Richardson explained that this was not the best location in the world.
You know, this was a project that the board voted on and approved several years ago. It was a multi-phased project. It was started before I got here. You did the initial part, put in and partner with the Wildlife Resources Commission, and then my understanding was that next phase was to move over and get the other piece. Now, there have been some concerns about the stability of that piece, and that's why the engineering study was done and given that recommendation on how to stabilize a portion of that property. So if the board intends to move forward with that project, this is a recommendation to do that.
It did make sense to move forward with it, because they, the way we're doing it now, we can ask for, if I'm understanding, if I'm saying this right, is now in the grant, we can get some of the money to stabilize that area.
That's correct.
Fifty percent.
Part of that project would allow, that was one of the things we asked them. And we actually wanted to do that under the last piece, but there wasn't. We only asked for, I think, $400,000, $200,000 under the last one, and didn't have enough to even do that if we wanted to. So my understanding is, I think the ripravment is about $240,000 or something like that.
But to answer your other question, there was not a survey done to see how many people is going to show up?
The wildlife ramp that was put in as a part of this is being used, and it is popular. But there are no commercial operations within five miles. It's very isolated, and in my opinion, it'll be very little used.
Well, if we know what the utilization on a ramp is, that gives you some idea of the willingness of people to go there.
Well, yeah, but the people that go there are basically fishermen from out of the area, and they only have one purpose, and that is to get their boat in the water, so they can go somewhere and sound fishing.
And in the last 30 days, on the weekends, we've had the boat ramps in Bell Haven, the existing wildlife, plus the county property. Even on the county property, we've had like 15 to 20 trucks, and even down at CB Marina on the side road down there. I mean, it is really been great for the sports fishermen.
Well, yeah. The COVID has given a lot of people a lot of time to go fishing, and yeah, you're right. It's been very busy this year. And it'll probably spread out over a longer period of time once the COVID is over, but it's been a busy year.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to proceed? Motion by Randy? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Four three. Thank you. Katie? You're up next.
Is there, I've submitted to you guys a suggested calendar for next year's Board of Commissioners meetings, as well as the planning retreat dates?
Any, you've already had these dates in advance. Did anybody have a change? Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Booth. I mean, here we end the age of COVID, I don't know what our individual plans are going to be. It's hard to plan long-term.
It's hard to plan long-term, and if we could just be willing to work with each other and help one another, maybe not every Monday is going to get met, but let's do what we can. Every first Monday, excuse me.
There are, I think, two Tuesdays due to holidays and those kinds of things. But the reason I give you these every December is because state law requires me to post these on the website and give notice and stuff, so...
It might be a good idea each month to make sure we're all okay with what's going to happen, and maybe even take a vote, and some of us may win and some of us may lose. Try to work with each other.
I think because of, you know, planning purposes and our restrictions, that we need, unless it's sickness, we need to be here.
Yeah, well, I agree. I mean, I'm going to be here no matter what, unless I'm sick.
Well, the way we've done it in the past, if somebody wanted to change, we did it at the previous meeting. Yeah, the previous meeting, so we'll continue to do that. We had a motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Second by John? Any other discussion? If not...
Just what are the times for the planning retreat? You know?
Usually, we run those two full days. I mean, it's not a full day.
Begin about what, 9:00 o'clock in the morning?
Usually about 9:00, run to about 3:00.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. The next one is the board committee appointments, with Chairman Evans going off. I would like to move from the Highway 17 Association to the EMS Oversight Committee. And so looking for somebody on the Highway 17, and I had written Stan, but I'd not ask you, would you be willing to serve on the Highway 1764? Would you be willing to serve again?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then on the War Committee, Evans was on there, and Randy, would you be agreeable serving on that?
I'm glad.
Katie, does that take care of the... Is there any other position committee that you want to change? Thank you very much. You got those changes. All right. The next item is, Katie, is the Legislative Goals.
Lastly, for me, I need a representative or voting designation for the NCAA legislative Goals Conference being held January 14th and 15th. Just as a reminder, these are going to be a virtual format this year.
I'll second. All right, got a motion, a second? Anybody that wants to fight out of that and take it?
Let's go one thing in the discussion period here. Would, there's going to be some issues to come up this year for the General Assembly. We've talked about some of them, there's probably going to be some more. Would we talk about it at the meeting before, I guess it's going to be in January when all this is going down? Can we talk about maybe some issues that we'd like to be broached with our representatives? Yeah, well, yeah, these would be goals.
These have already been submitted, and they're going through the process. Now, what happens...
The NCAA.
What happens at this virtual thing, if it's like what's happened in the meeting, is they go through, they narrow it down to, and I can't remember, like 20 or 30, and then they bring that on down to five? Five or six? But the committee has already approved... Yeah.
All committees have already done their work.
But at this next meeting, it'll be narrowed down even further, this is the last time. But it still doesn't keep us from presenting something to our representatives.
Good.
All right. Anything else as it relates to that? All right, the next item is mine.
Chairman?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't guess there's anybody opposed to that, but anyway, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
I have one other thing. I'm sorry, can we go back? I actually need a member and an alternate for the RPO TAC, and right now, it's currently just Commissioner Booth.
The TAC...
RPO.
The TAC... The TAC is the elected official group. The TCC is the technical group that is more staff. Commissioner Richardson serves as the alternate for the TCC. So what we need is a commissioner as, Commissioner Booth serves on the TAC as the alternate. So you either need to move Commissioner Booth as the primary and find another alternate, or if Commissioner Booth wants to stay the alternate, add somebody to the TAC. I think Commissioner Evans was...
We have to have both, is what you're saying. We've got to have a member and an alternate.
Yes.
So right now, on the TAC, the alternate is Booth, but we do not have a member. Is that... Okay. Would I, could I, would I, could I have a volunteer? Okay. Commissioner John Revoltz? Okay, and you'll say the alternate, and then on the TCC, Commissioner Richardson is the alternate?
I'll say the alternate. Somebody else wants to do the... You put Randy up there.
All right, Randy, would you do that? All right, but Randy is a member.
Actually, the member is held by the county manager of the county.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So that's by the bylaws.
So that's Brian. I got you. I got you. Yes. Okay, the next item relates to the Welkerson Community Center in Bell Haven. As you well know, we gave them a letter of support to pursue and go after a grant and they have got a tentative agreement from USDA out of the Kinston office and I think, yeah, Kim Daniels is the lender with USDA. And what the grant amount is, is $284,000 and the total renovation cost is $385,000. So they've got to raise $91,000 in match. The local community has, as of yesterday, had raised $31,000 and they're asking the commissioners if we will see fit to make some contribution to the cause. And this is for major roof repairs plus some damage that they have received from some of the leaks.
How many, how many things are going on in that building?
It's a combination. They rented out, they've got a wellness center in there. They also have, that's where the vugging is done. The community college uses it from time to time and I think the Health Department is using it now to do the COVID tests every Wednesday. They're there every Wednesday. It, you know, it gets a lot of use. It's just, they've never been able to accumulate the kind of money to make that kind of repair.
Well, you know, the problem I have with this is you give them money and we've been through this before in Beaufort County and you start to cycle. And then you've got Aurora in here and they want some money. And then you've got Bath and they want some money. And they've all got projects that are as equally as important as this project is in Bell Haven. When we gave them the support for this, I recall me saying, you know, you can apply for all the grants you want to, but I don't think the county ought to put any money into it. So I'm not going to vote for the county to put any money into it. It's their business. They need to take care of it themselves because again, when you do this, you're going to have to justify why you can't give Aurora money, why you can't give Bath money, why you can't give Pantico money, why you can't give this one money and that one money. And it took many years to break the cycle of the handouts and I'm not going to vote to start it again.
Well, I've always been supportive of any of these kind of projects. I supported the project in Bath when they did their remodeling. Be more than happy to support anything that comes from Pantico or Aurora or Chaco Lunacy. So to move it, I'll make a motion that we make a contribution of $10,000. It's 90, I think the number is 91 and they've raised already 31. If I understand it correctly, USDA will not do their grant unless there's pledges to do the whole thing. So this would be a pledge that they're trying to get pledges and so it's a no-go based on the USDA. I'll second. If they don't. All right, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion or question?
Since they're helping with some of the COVID issues, is there any way to get any CARES money? Either past or maybe even future? There's going to be some future money coming down in the next month or so. I don't know if it's going to be suitable for things like this, but it is directly associated with testing.
Yeah, and if James was here, I think they started last week. They're using, going to Aurora on Monday, they're going to Bell Haven, I think on Wednesday, may have the days wrong, and then Washington on Fridays. There's no doubt that it's going to continue to get used during next year. Beyond that, as it relates to COVID, I'm not sure, but it would probably end up being a place for vaccinations.
They get rent for that. They get income from it.
Well, the $10,000 is being guaranteed if they get the 100.
Yes. It's a pledge. It's a pledge.
If they get 81, what you're doing, you're guaranteeing 10 if they get 81.
It's a pledge, I mean...
There's another nine coming from. Who's the other nine coming from?
The rest.
Okay.
They've already got commitments of 31.
They don't have to raise 91, they don't have to raise 100.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six, one. Thank you. Hood, or Dan, to your agenda. So the first one is the jail door report.
Okay, jail door reports. I'm presuming this request was sent to the, you've got a report, that this was sent to the sheriff. Okay, proceed.
Actually, it was sent to the Public Works Director. This was on the jail doors and her response was, "All installed equipment continues to function properly. There are four mechanical locks in mechanical spaces that remain to be replaced and the county staff is working with the contractor to determine how to do that." So the only locks, there are four locks that are on mechanical areas that haven't been changed out yet, but everything else is working the way it's supposed to.
Okay, now, I talked to Christina today and I'm getting a different story. I'm getting a story that they've had to run around down there with keys to unlock doors, that something wasn't working right and all this sort of thing. Christina said she had no knowledge of that. She gave exactly the same report that you just gave. And my purpose on putting this on the agenda is because of the secrecy that goes on in the Sheriff's Department and the withholding of information that comes out of the Sheriff's Department. I don't want to wake up one morning and find all the people in the jail over in Greenville because the sheriff has closed the jail again. So I will make a motion that the manager go to the sheriff and ask him to present in writing any problems that he has with the operation of the doors or the operation of the jail. That's a motion.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Far as I'm concerned, I think the one that needs to do it is Public Works Director. I mean, that's the one that's been working on the jail, that's the one that's been bringing the reports back to us. So I mean, I don't have a problem with what you're asking as long as we get it, but I think that's where it ought to come from.
Well, you can micromanage the manager all you want to, but the request goes to the manager and he can send the janitor to ask him if he wants to, that's up to him.
Micromanaging, I didn't intend... No, well, that's a...
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to ask the question and to put them on notice to say if there is an issue, you need to let us know in writing. Now, whether I get a response, I will send the request, no need for a motion. I'm happy to do it and we'll take care of it.
All right, I think the primary concern is, is that, you know, making sure the contractor, I mean, we need to get the contractor back in there to make, if there's any changes.
She said she was satisfied with the contractor, that everything was working just like she had intended and that she had a little bit of money left over to fix some problem that wasn't really, you know, that she had figured if she had any money left over, she would fix it. So, you know, I think, you know, the problem is, the problem is, when this thing first happened and they shut the jail down, no commissioner that I know of, at least they didn't tell me, had heard of problems with, those serious of a problem with the jail doors. Somebody was withholding information from the commissioners. I don't want to go through that again with this guy. So this will put him on the spot and he has, somebody over there has to either answer or not answer. So if they don't answer, they're lying. If they answer and don't tell the truth, they're lying. There's only one door, the truth.
You want to go to item number two, Brenda Hamilton?
I do. I've got an email from Chief Deppy Rose and essentially the last time we talked about this, as you'll recall, Ms. Clark with the University of Florida had said she thought she saw some things, she took it out in sunlight because it's easier to see, they were looking at those. So she has replied back and this was as of November 16th and it says, "Just letting you know, I received data and it appears to me that there is evidence of another dog or dogs. Samples from the flashlight don't match the known dogs. Flashlight samples are blood flecks from the lens, blood from the hood of the flashlight and from the threaded area where the hood screws into the base. I'm still analyzing the data and will have to do more reactions, but at this point I'm inclined to believe that another, that other dogs were involved." So my comment back, because what I got from Chief Deppy Rose was, says, "We've not received an answer to our follow-up questions and we've not received the results of the follow-up tests that were run after unknown domestic dog DNA was located. The lab does have access to the DNA samples that were taken from other dogs located in the area." So my reply back to Chief Rose was, I said, "So it appears there may be an unknown dog or dogs available." I said, "If she has those DNA samples and they don't match, are we assuming there's something new there?" And he replied back and said, "No, they have the samples, but they haven't run those samples yet for the neighborhood sweep." You know, they went around the neighborhood and took DNA samples of all the dogs in the neighborhood. They are running against those right now. So what we're waiting for is to hear back. What she said is, "There's some additional dog DNA out there that they haven't seen before." Remember, they looked at just the two dogs that were there immediately. They've ruled both of those out with the DNA, but they've found some additional dog DNA. Now, it could be that it's one of the neighbor's dogs, neighborhood dogs that they caught up in the sweep when they did DNA because they're running against that, or it could be a brand new dog altogether that we don't have DNA samples on. But she seems to indicate that based on the results, there's an unknown dog involved that they don't have yet. My understanding is it has cleared the two initial dogs that were immediately there that they quarantined and watched and took stool samples and all those kind of things from, that those DNA do not match, does not match this.
Next one, Hood, is the Beaufort County School Budget.
Okay. You know, the purpose of this is for a discussion about the school budget. You know, imagine the school superintendent's up here tonight asking for money. Guys, we don't know how much money they have taken in. I've asked for, I've asked for a report and I got something that a third grader would have given me for a report that I can't even read in some such small letters. So I think what we need to do is go back to the school system. We'll be getting, we'll be getting next month the budget process anyway. We go back to the school system and say what I asked for to begin with. What I asked for was something down to the, what is it, function level of their federal budget, their state budget and their county budget. Now, they have this information over there. If they don't have this information, it's something commissioners need to know about, how poorly run the whole base is. So, you know, if they can't produce it, that tells us one thing. If they do produce it, then we've got data analyzed. So this is not adequate, what we've been sent, so I would like the manager, I'll make a motion to the manager, go back and say, "Look at it, you know, you need to give us what we asked for to begin with. It needs to be something that we can read and it needs to be from all three budgets plus whatever you have been awarded in state and federal funds as a result of COVID." Now, they've admitted to a $1.3 million fund out and really, you know, that's a lot of money, but with the kind of budget they're running, I'm not concerned that they've got a huge fund out based on what they're telling me. But I am concerned that there's a lot of money over there that we don't know about and we don't know what to be able to use on. So I think we need to go back and ask the same question we asked last month and their school teachers, they understand you didn't ask the question. Bring it back on maybe the high school or college level this time.
I think one of the things that you're saying the highlight is how much COVID money did they get from state and federal?
Yeah, and I think there has to be a lot of savings in supplies in that school budget. There's savings in there that they're not telling us about. School buses, people are telling me they're running up and down the road and probably spending more money for fuel than what we thought they would spend, but we need to know about all these things.
Right? I mean, I agree with you. These three line items and then the next page, 315, I don't know what that means. Future four X 2019, 2020, but Anita, you've got the degrees.
Honestly, I got a magnifying glass and still couldn't see it. I couldn't read it. So no, I don't know what it means, sorry.
Okay, Hood, next item, School Resource Officers.
Well, the issues on school resource officers, we've already touched on in any of, what we did earlier on signing of contracts. Letting this sheriff sign a contract, guys, you know, is something we don't need to be doing. That's county money. That's the money of the taxpayers and he goes out and signs contracts. We've been through this before. We've been, since I've been a commissioner, about every five years we go through this business of people out signing contracts and nobody knows what they're signing because all of a sudden you start having a problem. And we do not need to allow anybody to sign a contract, the sheriff or anybody else. The chairman of the board needs to sign the contract so we know what's going on. Otherwise, you don't know what's going on. Just like people come in and ask, "Well, I'm going to sign the contract." Well, what does the contract say? Well, I don't know. Well, if you don't know, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer to look after their money and that doesn't mean he can sign a contract willingly. So that's the whole purpose of this discussion right here is related to school resources, resource commissions. I mean, the commissioners have been embarrassed by the sheriff, taken it on himself to try to punish us because we're not giving five positions that never existed to begin with. Even before the budget, these are five new positions and we've got to ask him, please justify, that's in writing, why do you need these five new positions you're talking about? Are you doing that much more business or anything else? And he can't do it. He refuses to do it. He says he deserves money because he wants the money. That sounds like a three-year-old again to me. So that's the whole purpose of this discussion. We do not need to allow just anybody to sign a contract. You know, we can, we authorize the manager on page to sign contracts, but it doesn't need to be below the manager level. It needs to be the chairman of the board.
Mr. Richardson, what's the best way to stop this?
For this board to say that what we've said tonight is that is, you don't bring anything in here that the chairman is not going to sign unless we designate the manager to sign.
Is that all we have to do?
It's as simple as that, but the board has been allowing this to go on and it's really been slackened. I don't think people realize, you know, how serious the problem can be when you have contracts out there and you don't know, we don't know what else. We have people signing them that will agree to things we don't even know about.
If I was the department head, I'd want as much help as I could get, you know, because if I'm going to sink, I want everybody to go with me.
That's right. That's the whole purpose of this discussion and I think we made a great first move tonight on the health department contracts when you said, "Okay, if you guys want to sign a contract, then you sign it with the chairman of the board after it's done through by the commissioners." Because that's the process and that's the procedure.
Allowing, thank you, allowing the sheriff to sign a contract, the way he has been behaving is just total irresponsibility on our part. So that's all I have to say on that unless somebody else has something. Hold on. I'm going to say it.
What I'm thinking right now is there is a lot of confusion about the school resource officers and I think in order to make a good quality, informed decision, that we need to pull together all parties involved. It would be wrong for us to try to make a decision based on, he said it, she said it, they said it. The school board, the sheriff's department and this board of commissioners, we need to hear it just the way it is and not saying that, well, they said this and they said that and somewhere in the middle is the truth. And that's where we need to be, is in the middle with the truth and then we can make a well-informed decision as to what direction we need to go.
Well, I don't have a problem with it either, however, all I know is what I read. And I read the email and I've spoken to the superintendent and it appears that the email was pretty explicitly correct. He wanted to negate the contract and that represents us. We are a party to that contract, whether we signed it or not. We're the ones supplying the funding. So I don't mind meeting with everyone, but we have to understand that we're gonna be in charge on this one issue. We're not gonna be playing second fiddle to the sheriff or the superintendent. I'm not even in favor of resource officers in 100%. I think there should be a modified hybrid policy on how we protect the schools. However, we're in agreement with the schools and we should honor all agreements, whether the sheriff wants to be party to that or not, even if it means us going out and finding private security. Whatever it takes, we need to honor this agreement. I don't like overbusting agreement. I think that's wrong. Yeah, it would not serve us well going forward for our reputation.
Brian?
Excuse me, go ahead.
Brian? No, just trying to add some clarification to it. The school system is the one that procured the security services. They procured that request from the sheriff's office. They could procure that through a private security firm. They could do those kind of things. It's their responsibility to do that. My conversations with the folks about pulling money back from the sheriff's office for those positions if they choose not to do that work is that you can do that and you can do that mid-year, but the county could not, the county could not go and contract with a private security provider to provide security at the schools. You're not allowed to do that according to the folks at the school government. They said that has to be a school function to do that. You can fund it, obviously, which is what you've been doing. And I also asked, was there a way for us to fund it directly? And they said, no, you can't do that either because when you, if you don't, every time we send money to the schools, there's a percentage of it that comes out for charter schools. And so I asked the question, could we directly fund it? And they said, no, you can't do that. You can't do that because you're circumventing the law that says a portion of that money has to go to the charters. So it would be the school's responsibility to determine how they want to provide school security. It was the commissioners' vote to say, we will fund that several years ago and raised a penny tax to do that. And you simply funded them to do that, but it's their obligation to figure out how to do that. You don't have the ability to provide it yourself. It's not like a facility, is what the folks at the school are saying.
John?
I don't have a problem if the board wants to solve, the school board wants to solve the problem, present us with a solution and what it costs. I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Excuse me, John.
Anita, doesn't the state grants flow to the county?
State grants flow to the school system and then they pay the funds to us. But, Mr. Manager, we sort of fund them directly as it is because we pay the SROs directly.
There's a difference in what I'm saying in that we fund the sheriff's office, that's correct. We do fund the sheriff's office, but we are not funding an outside agency, so.
So we can fund them directly if it's through the sheriff's office but not contract with an outside agency?
Because it is a county, we have the ability to fund the sheriff's office and then they have a negotiation between the two to do that. But the legal opinion from the attorneys at school government was we couldn't step outside of that and say, we're gonna contract with Allied Security or Pinkerton or one of those folks to directly provide security at the schools. That's the school's requirement to do that, not ours. We can fund it, but we can't directly be the, we can't be a party to that contract saying we're doing it.
The issue here is the sheriff signing contracts and that issue is still, the sheriff should not be signing any contracts to anybody for anything or any of his employees. That needs to be signed by the chairman of the board and county commissioners.
Mr. Manager, you stated that when the contract is over, the money can be pulled back?
No, sir, actually, not when it's over. Well, I guess, yes, if they choose. According to Caramalas, the school government, because I was always under the impression, because there's some statutory language that does not allow a board of county commissioners to pull money back from the school system without some additional work and from the sheriff himself as his salary. So I wanted to confirm that. My understanding was you couldn't do that to the sheriff's office as a whole, but according to Cara, legally, yes, you can do that. And in fact, I sent Eddie Caldwell, who is the director of the Sheriff's Association, in one of his little pamphlets, it says that they could do that. And I actually called him and asked him to send me a copy of the supporting documentation that he had because he said he had an email from Jack Vogt at the school of government, but it's been a week or so ago and he's yet to send it to me, so.
And the second part of my question, I wanted to ask it, but I'm scared of the answer. What happened to the 14 men that we was funding, or the school was funding for resource officers? What happened to those slots?
What happened to them? They're still in the sheriff's office now. I mean, they're providing that service. My understanding, and again, this is what I've been told, you may have been told the same thing about Chief Deputy Rose. What Chief Deputy Rose said to me was, the reason we said to the school system, we are ending the MOU and giving you notice, giving you not a day notice that we're getting out of the MOU is because we can't guarantee you that we can always have an officer there. And according to the MOU, we're supposed to guarantee that you have an officer there every day, all day. And we can't do that because of all these transports we're having to do. So he says that's the reason they're ending the MOU, that they have every intention to have an officer there through the end of the fiscal year. What I've heard the superintendent say is the school board is not happy with that and they're essentially looking for an alternate method to provide that service based on the letter that they received from the sheriff.
But wasn't those positions, I mean, I'm just, I hate to see everybody lose a job, but wasn't those positions allocated for that purpose?
Those positions, when the board of commissioners increased funding to the school system, it was specifically for school resource officers. So if that is no longer a function that the sheriff's office would perform, it would be appropriate and legal for the board of commissioners to say, we're no longer gonna fund you that and we're gonna take that money back because we're either not gonna do it or we're gonna take the money that we were giving you to do that and give it to somebody, give it to the school system so they can provide it themselves however they want to provide it.
My conversation with Chief Rose is very similar to what you just, well, pretty much what you said, is that they were gonna be in violation, could not assure the school system, but their intention was until June the 30th was to provide as many resource officers at each one of those schools. But he could not guarantee it, they'd be in violation.
Yeah, you know, just to be clear with this thing, I think the rub has come because, I mean, Chief Deputy Rose has come in here and said, this is a political thing. He said very clearly, I work for a political official, so I'm making a political statement to you. You're elected, so we're gonna use every mechanism we can to try to politically motivate you to do something. The five positions that the sheriff's office has heartburn over is five positions that the sheriff's office did not fund in their budget when they said, we're gonna make these changes in our personnel and we can do this without additional funding. We can hold our budget flat for the next year. And they did that and they committed to that and we held them to that because that's what they said they were gonna do. They've now come back and said, we can't do that and now we need our five positions. And that's the rub. So just so everything's clear, that's where it is.
Yeah, but those were five positions that never existed to begin with and that's the whole problem. And then the sheriff took what he called surplus money, a quarter of a million dollars a string, and gave 10, 12, 15,000 dollar raises to his favorite employees without the vote of this board. So you got a situation here where you got a sheriff that's just running wild and when people start behaving like the sheriff is behaving, they do not need the responsibility of signing contracts in order to do things. And quite frankly, we all know that the sheriff never provided resource officers to every location, every day because of sickness, absences, and a whole bunch of other things. That's just a convenient excuse, we can't provide 100% coverage. So, you know, I'm hoping that the schools will find their own solution to this that they can be happy with and they can take the state money to fund it and if they need some more from us, that's fine. I'm sort of like Stan. I don't think you need a resource officer in every school. I don't think there are that many criminal students out there. I think there's some problems out there and you do need resource officers.
You want to go into the next item, open meeting laws?
The open meeting laws?
Yeah, we ran up against the open meeting laws with the commissioners' meeting that we tried to have this month when we had people in the county government weighed in to a political situation and arranged it for Democrats to vote on a Republican meeting, but that's really not what I want to talk about tonight. What I want to talk about is the other end of this and I'm gonna offend some people and you're gonna go home mad and that's fine, you just have to go home mad. Because I'm going to tell you, I'm gonna play the game for the coming year. We have had a lot of situations in the last two or three years that have been done with so-called backroom deals. Now, let me tell you what a backroom deal is. A backroom deal is when the school superintendent summons the chairman of the board and the vice chairman of the board to a meeting and the rest of the commissioners don't even know about it until it's over with. That is unethical. That is totally unethical. It is also wrong when we send building inspectors down to write letters to destroy hospital buildings and certain commissioners participated in that and it rested a board of county commissioners didn't know about it. Now, every commissioner is to be treated equally and the same on the board. Every commissioner, and I'm delivering it to the table when I say this, every commissioner is to receive the same information. Every commissioner is to receive the same courtesy from the clerk and the manager and the chairman of the board. And there are a lot of items that have come up during the past two or three years that have been negotiated and walked in and thrown on the table and said, you gotta vote for this. Well, I'm telling you something, you're gonna have a fight on your hands if you use those unethical practices during the coming year. It is gonna be, it is gonna be rough and it is gonna be tough. So those of you that are trying to do these things and have acted unethically in the past toward the board and toward your commissioners and toward each other, need to get ready for the fight because it's coming at you. And that is also a violation of the open meetings law.
You want to move to the next item?
I'd like to.
Hood, your mic.
Oh, yes, sir. In that there was some discussion that we, meeting as a caucus of Republicans would be meeting unofficially as boards of commissioners, when we would be discussing only political issues. I think if there is any element of indecision on the way it should be, we should ask the general assembly to enact legislation to allow political parties to meet and caucus just as they do. Both parties meet and caucus. As long as nothing is discussed that is county-oriented and only politically oriented, even though you're discussing items that you might bring up as a group, if they do it, we should be able to do it. The business is done in public. Now, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. The general assembly can meet, we should be able to meet as well. And fair is fair. And then take away the backroom deals where it's not done in the manager's office, it's done ourselves.
Was that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we ask our representative to enact legislation, not a local bill, but legislation across the board for the entire state. And we could help him craft the wording if he needs any help, just so that we can do what they do. And we will not be in violation of any open meeting sunshine law, which is, you know, we all want to meet in public and do the people's business, but, you know, we should be able to meet. And saying we can't meet, talking about something that has nothing to do with county business, is wrong.
Second? Second. Any discussion?
You know, I'd like to say, you know, I was probably the cause of all this and it all stemmed from, in campaigning, I asked, how does one decide who's gonna be chairman and vice chairman? And I was told, well, why don't you have a caucus and talk about it? I said, that sounds like a great idea. And I know that there's a problem with quorums, you know, so I said, well, I'd be glad to meet with single people, you know, to figure this out. You know, I've sat here for 20-some years videotaping and I never could, never knew how this was done. It just suddenly, people were asked to be chairman or people were asked to be vice chairman. So it had to be occurring somewhere else. So that's, I just thought, it sounded like a good thing to me, so I said, okay, let's do it. So that's how it all started.
Accept your apology.
Well, it's illegal for four sitting commissioners to get together and discuss the chairman and vice chairman.
No, it's not. We're talking to caucus, Frankie. Let's stick to the motion.
No, 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 do, without the law, the existing law did not allow us to do that. You're asking us to have a law that allows a caucus, is that not right?
I think that's fair.
Okay. All right.
If there's any indecision whatsoever, we don't want to be on the wrong side of that. We want to be on the right side of it and we want the general assembly to give us that right side.
I knew the brother had just told us that he was wrong. So, I mean, he knew he was wrong. He said with his phone.
I said I was willing to.
We would like to see our representative make him right. I have a problem.
You guys use your mics. I mean, if you finish this, fine. All right, any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Vote five to two.
Well, with that, we need to spark to the, to our representatives, both House and Senate.
All right, we're down to item number six. Since you mentioned that in the next resolution, can you combine the two together or you want to stick with two?
Well, let me stick with two because myself and mine won't hand with it if I combine.
All right.
Quite frankly, just to be resolved that the board of county commissioners resolves not to use county money to enforce the lockdown in those accounts. One thing's going on, this lockdown stuff is gonna get to be worse and worse. The public's getting ready to rebel. This is a resolution that puts a little bit of teeth into this. I mean, quite frankly, as we said earlier tonight, the COVID thing's gonna go on forever. Politicians have found a new tool. Unless legislators step in and put a complete stop to them, this is not gonna get any better. And we need to get our schools open, we need to get the county going. The purpose of this resolution is to put pressure on our elected representatives and on the governor to wake up and get people back to school and back to work. We've done the whole COVID thing backwards. We have never done a pandemic before where we shut down everything. Pandemics have always been held in, our standard procedure is protect those that are at risk and let the rest of the people who are not at risk work. And we have done it that way this time and it's been, the cost has been a lot greater than the benefit that we have gotten out of it. That's the purpose of this resolution, that's why it's so simple and so little.
Got a motion and a second, discussion?
I got something to say. I think this is very important. We've seen the effects of shutting down businesses and what it's done to businesses and what it's done to individual psyches. This will be an ancillary effect that's gonna go on for some time and we're not Those have been ancillary effect that's going to go on for some time, and we're not going to know the damage for years to come. Now, what I'd like to mention is how our children in schools are being damaged right now. They're not learning. Statistics say that 20% of all students are getting nothing from online education right now. The other four are having trouble with it, and the parents are having to get involved. Teachers are not being able to do it all on their own. It's just too much. In-school learning is the best way to teach. Children are not getting sick. They may pass some on to the teachers. However, it appears to me a lot of precautions have been taken. Now that we're moving into vaccines, we need to be ready to relax all standards to allow our nation to go back to normal. Because I can tell you, and I've said this before to this group, this is never going to happen again. We will never be able to shut this nation down again. We've already damaged it beyond recognition. Again, we won't know how bad we've damaged this nation for a number of years. We're suffering as a people. I tend to have a personal peeve that children are not as smart as they used to be in a lot of areas. Their reason, their ability for cognitive reasoning is almost shot. And you take a year out of these kids' life, and yet you push them through, and they're going to get 11 years of education rather than 12, but they're going to graduate like they've gotten 12 years of education. And the colleges are going to relax their standards even more as they've relaxed them over the last few decades because we know colleges have become just a grist mill for money. So, we're not going to educate our children. And if we don't educate our children properly, we're not going to exist as a society. It's just not going to happen. So, we've got to take, we politicians at every level, we body politic of North Carolina, the General Assembly of North Carolina, and our federal government have got to do what it takes to make things better. Um, I'm done.
Okay. Other commissioners, other comments? All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed, five to two. All right?
You know, you're right, Mr. Chairman. The public combined with its little ideas in that past because the next resolution is to reopen the Boford County. And again, this is a resolution that was intended to put pressure on our elected officials, our governor, our senator, and our House of Representatives members. And it says there obviously, therefore, therefore we evolve, the Boford County Board of Commissioners is requesting Boford County be reopened immediately and that no county money be used to enforce their lockouts. That's the same, essentially the same thing we just voted on. But it's, it's not intended to be an activist thing where everybody goes out to the mall and starts doing what they want to do. It's intended to put pressure on the people in Raleigh that we can have sent up there to make these decisions for us because, quite frankly, they're not doing anything for us right now. They're putting us further and closer to hand. There are a lot of families that are going bankrupt. You won't see the financial devastation from this for another year. It's a terrible thing on families, especially the working poor, the poor, and anybody else that has to go out and earn or live. Now, if you're wealthy, you're sitting at home clipping coupons, that's one thing. But most of us in Boford County are not. So, that's a motion.
Uh, I have trouble with part of the words. I'll go first. I don't like the word reopen. As far as I'm concerned, there is nobody that's totally closed at this point in time. I would like to see, I'd like to offer either ask you to change it or an amendment, whichever you see appropriate. The change reopen to support, and you add the word businesses at the end of the title, resolution to support Boford County businesses.
I don't have a problem with that.
All right, and then if you go down to the, that paragraph that you read, that we say that the Boford County Board of Commissioners supports the small business owner's rights to remain open, period, since they're already open, that we support the rights to remain open.
I don't have a problem with that.
And also strike that and that no county money be used. I just don't think that that's appropriate. Yeah.
I do not have a problem with that.
Okay.
I can live with that if the Commissioner had to try and live with it.
John, did you, you got a comment?
No.
Anybody else?
I'd probably like to see maybe for the mask people, just to put in there something about mask protocol needs to be followed.
I would say that this in no way means that we do not support personal protective behaviors. But if I'm learning what language you want to put it in, I don't have a problem with that because I'm sitting here in a mask, and I would tell anybody, do whatever you think you need to do to protect yourself from this.
Well, the business owner, the business owners that I've had conversations with, they don't have any problems with them having to wear masks, the employees. I just think if you open that can, Randy, you're talking about distance and sanitizing a bunch of things. I think what we're trying to say is that we support the rights of the small business owner to remain open.
Being small business, I agree with you.
End of the story. Making it, I'll, finally, you did one this time that was short and sweet.
Thank you.
You just need to work with your cohort a little more.
Tell my cohort to help me with this.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing just for the record. We're seeing small business fail while big box distributors are making tons of money. Amazon is making more money than they've ever made. They're hiring 1,400 people a day. And this is what's happening to America. I mean, politically, they're doing things to, to, to win while people like Randy lose. People like me lose. And I think it's wrong, and I think we're going to have to fight back because right now, they have the upper hand. They've got the money, they've got the political support, and if the small purveyor does not stand on his hind legs with our help and fight back, they're going to be gone. And then these corporate elites are going to run the nation. They will pick the president, like they did the last four years, and the last election.
Katie, did you get the changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, call for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. All those opposed, five to two. Thank you, gentlemen.
I just asked, did you want that sent to anybody or?
Well, yeah, we want, actually, you said it to all 100 counties and our elected representatives.
Ed, I also need to remind you that we voted that it was okay to put the numbers up there, five, two, three, four, whatever it is.
Yeah, if you want to put that on there, we have to do that. Five Republicans and Democrats, that's what you say.
I, I think you, I think we've already passed that you reveal the names. Whatever, you've been doing them right, so you do it. You do it, Katie. Don't let this group confuse you. The next item was withdrawn, so now we're down to, to Stan, filming other commissioner meetings.
Yeah, years ago, back in 1970, 1998. Use your mic, use your mics. It's getting late. Years and years ago, probably 1997, 1998, Hood and Randy helped me with it, but there was a group called the Republican Men's Club, and we wanted to see the filming done in Boford County. We wanted our meetings to be viewed by the public at large, and we wanted a quality product, as good a quality product as we could afford. So, Hood got the money together, we all chipped in, and I went to Randy Walker and got Randy involved. And Randy remembers a lot more about it than I do. But we were able to do that, and then it was just a few later, a few years later, after the Republican Men's Club paying for the meetings to be filmed, and it was a great success. People were watching them across the county. We got them on cable TV.
Had parties.
Yeah, had parties, had them at the library, and we'd come in and get them from the county office. It worked. Well, it became such a huge success, the rest of the commissioners elected to take that on themselves, and they, and the county began to film the meetings, and Randy was asked to do it. And Randy would charge a small fee, and it got to be a little bit more every year, and by the time he finished, he still wasn't charging too much. He was charging a fair amount of money, and it was a great deal for all of us. Now he's a commissioner. He can help us without charging us a dime. And what I would like to do is ask Randy publicly, would you mind, with the support of the commissioners, working with our tech staff to make our filming even better now?
I'd be glad to. I'd like to see streamed live, and I think in this COVID world we're living in, that wouldn't be such a bad thing. I mean, we have, very few people can come to these meetings, but we'd have a huge audience at home. And really, the only change, you've got the greatest equipment, but we, you know, I'd like to see graphics come up when an issue that we're talking about comes up, the graphics, and you've got that capability. I'd like to see, you know, I've been watching at home as best I can, and it's really hard to see who's talking. Now, I know we're spread out now, but we do need to probably tighten up our shots a little bit, and that's just a matter of back there in the control room, paying attention, and when somebody's talking, get on them and zoom in. It's very important to see your lips moving and when you're watching along on television. These microphones are a little frustrating. Tonight, where you're not pushing the button to talk, and you can't hear a thing. So, that's, and these are all complaints that I got during my campaign. People knowing that I was involved with it, and, you know, and do some, and, you know, and if I vote for you, do something about the video. So, that's, and that's, having shared that with Stan once again, that's where all this came about.
Chairman?
Yes. Well, during, during my campaign, I got more complaints about the filming of the commissioner's meeting than I did anything else. The fixed camera at the end of the room, you can't tell who's talking, and everybody sounds the same. And we've spent $140,000 in, of capital in this, and we've got a much inferior product to what we ever had before. So, I think Randy probably knows more about this technology. He knows how to do it. He can make it work. We need to designate him for, at least for a while, to choreograph these meetings, and I know some of you will take exception with those words, but that simply means getting a camera where it's supposed to be and getting the sound where, where it's supposed to be. Because there are a lot of people in the county that are upset that they can't see these meetings and that they're so grainy. And I'll tell you one other thing, when you guys mentioned it, and I hadn't talked to you about it before, but the man lives in Boford County that does the streaming for about half of the state, and I know where he lives.
I, I think the streaming is a good idea, the live streaming. But from the standpoint of you going outside of your set-in position as a county commissioner and the zooming in and those sort of things, the whole idea, when we put the cameras in here and what we did, was for a person that was sitting on the back row back there, what they see is the same thing to the public. So, I'm with you on the, on the, on the streaming, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't support you going in the back room and getting involved in that part of it.
Well, and then, but there is the issue of graphics, but I've always taken video and taken the shot that nobody gets to see. So, the one you just mentioned, everybody sees it. That's what it looks like to everybody who walks in the back of the room. You need that ESPN headshot. And unfortunately, it is a show, and we need to, and you've got, you're telling the story when you're doing the video. And so, you want to tell the story so it's entertaining. Some of the stuff we're doing is incredibly boring.
It's entertaining.
Right.
Even as it is right now, it's entertaining.
Well, sure. So, but I tell you, we have a very informed county residents. They just come to me because they know that I was involved with it for all those years. And it's amazing to me what the questions that I get, and, and the wrong, they're going down the wrong path, I try to lead them back all the time.
Randy.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Colonel Yarwood.
Hit your mic.
But Jerry and I was out there more days than you was out there altogether, and we said nothing. Where did you see all these people at? Please tell me, where you saw all these people at?
It just, uh, you weren't down, let's say, you weren't down in Bath on the day of election.
Did you miss the day out there? I just wonder where you saw all these people at?
Well, you were there, early voting, I missed, but on the third, I hit, I hit Bath heavy.
In Bath, and then Bath on Election Day about two, about 35 before the people voted because they voted early. If you look at the numbers, more than that, but early voters up here on Hackney-Hollow Drive where the people voted at. Now, you come up here with some wild goose ass there, about so many people complain. We was out there every day. We was there every day.
It's my mistake that I didn't take naming addresses, but next time I will, and I will present them to you.
Please do.
I want you to be a humble man and not to beat the sun. Well, I can tell you this, for the last three years, I've had complaints about the quality of the filming. It's grainy, the fixed camera in the back of the room is the dumbest thing we've ever done. You cannot tell who's talking. People complained to me about the same thing. You need, the camera needs to go on whoever is talking. There's a lot of things that can be done to improve this, and if you think the public is not aware that you have rigged a bad product, I got news for you.
Well, I mean, I just, it just amazes me that I was out there every day just.
Send your, send your complaints to Commissioner Booth.
Okay. I just want to say one thing. Anytime any one of these commissioners key up the mic, everybody knows exactly who's talking. Nobody will mistake me for Hood or Stan for Ed.
You pull this thing up and watch it, you can't tell who's talking.
Did you have any comments, John? I don't want, we need to move to the next item.
First of all, I'd like to say one thing. First of all, people in the back, seeing this as a, as a certain way, and that's the way everybody should see it, that's operating at the lowest common denominator. First of all, we got all these screens. Why couldn't people in the back see the headshot? Then it's like they're right up front. I mean, they're closer than COVID will allow. And basically, we're allowing people to come into our house, our room, and join us, but we're not. If they can hardly hear it, and if it's grainy, and it's, and it's just not a good product. The product we're getting off the internet is less than 700 dots per inch.
You got a motion, right?
Yeah. And we need to be filming at least 1080. We really do, and we could. The machinery will handle 1080, won't it?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, right now, the standard is 4K. When we shoot stuff, we shoot 4K. And we've got big enough computers, and if, we at least do 1080. So, I will make a motion that Randy works in advisory capacity to help our tech staff to effect a better product for the public to see.
Second.
That's the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Going to hear it from the public, guys.
All right.
I was out there more than anybody else out here, and nobody said a thing about that. Not one thing.
They know you're on the inside, John.
Oh, come on. Yeah, I'm on the inside.
You just proved yourself. They're not going to say anything to you about it.
Okay. Gentlemen, we're down to the last item, and Stan, could I ask you not to read every word of this, to do like Hood, do like Hood, and just?
I will make a deal with you. I won't read a bit of it. I'll only speak to it for a moment or two, as long as you vote for it.
I'll tell you right now, I will not vote for it as it's written.
What part do you have a problem with?
Well, I think, I think what you're saying, and what my feeling is, is that the election of the President of the United States should be a federal law. It should, it should not be by 50 individual states having their own way of doing it.
Yeah, we have to change the whole constitution.
Well, so what you're doing.
Article 111 stipulates that the General Assembly's alone decide how the elections are run. Governors have no, no way. You cannot have a lawsuit to change the way an individual state elects. That was, that happened. Yeah, we probably have an unconstitutional election that happened just now.
Go ahead, go ahead and hit your, hit your highlights of resolution.
Well, if you're not going to vote for it, I'm going to read resolution. But I knew that. I mean, your guy won.
It's showtime. It's showtime. Read every word of it. Go ahead and read every word.
Showtime for American people. This is what I'm, I'm here to do. I represent the folks. Resolution in defense of free and fair, constitutionally conducted elections in North Carolina and all of the United States of America's 50 states. Whereas, the United States of America in the year 2020, and by the constitutionally prescribed efforts of all of its 50 states, did hold an election that did occur under the cloud of multiple improprieties, many of an unconstitutional nature, other improprieties of a felonious nature, and whereas, and the general election of 2020 president was elected, where there is being proved that there was a coordinated effort by an extensive corrupt cabal, including, but not limited to, politically partisan state politicians that have certain prescribed duties to conduct elections, the corrupt and without merit or any measure of integrity propagandist media, who did prostitute themselves to the benefit of the Democratic Socialist Party and its candidates, the world's largest social networks that did traffic in fake news and abject wanton censorship to enrich the Democratic Socialist Party's candidates, voting machines that were internet accessible and programmable to affect election outcomes, overtly partisan executive government officials and activist judicial systems who played a major role in politically packaging the COVID pandemic, thus making mail-in voting overly accessible while not guaranteeing the performance of proper oversight to ensure the validity of this convoluted process. And whereas, the United States Constitution, Article One, Section Four, provides for the rulemaking and procedures for states' elections, providing they meet all federal voting rights statutes, exclusively resides with states' legislatures, with the end result in this election cycle that some states did not conduct elections that were fully constitutional, including North Carolina. Whereas, the North Carolina State Board of Elections, approved, appointed by Governor Roy Cooper, did not attempt with the complete assistance, uh, no, did attempt with the complete assistance of Attorney General Josh Stein to subvert the will of the North Carolina Legislature, and therefore would have violated the will of North Carolina's governed people, and whereas in this constitutional republic of our United States of America, the democratic process of selecting the people's government representatives is sacrosanct. And when the constitutionally prescribed process is amended by partisan politicians and other wrongful and/or lawless activists, the entire participating public, irrespective of special interests, is wholly disenfranchised. Therefore, let it be resolved, Beaufort County's commissioners in totality respect the sanctity of free and fair, constitutionally conducted elections in our state of North Carolina, and will advocate and act without apprehension for this essential end by the most constitutionally proper and lawfully prescribed democratic means, and additionally, expect all other states' politicians, government officials to do the same. All right, basically, we had a bad election in North Carolina, but thankfully, it wasn't as bad as some of the other states. States where they're witnessing people going under tables and pulling out suitcases of ballots after they told everybody to go home. This would be Pitts County, Georgia. Uh, you, you'll have your time in a moment, if you want to contend that. Uh, pulling out suitcases of ballots after they say there's a water main break, I was watching the election, that's what they said, there's a water main break. Then we find out days later, it was just a ballcock assembly and a toilet was not working properly. So, they sent everybody home, they turned off the cameras, cameras came back on magically, and they were in there counting ballots out of the suitcases. Does that sound right to you? These are things that we can correct in North Carolina. We, you were talking about a federal law. We're not talking about a federal law. That would not be what the Constitution of United States prescribes in Article One, Section Four. What we have to do is in North Carolina, set a standard, a standard that other states will emulate, a standard where we will have free and fair elections. We're county commissioners, a body politic of the state of North Carolina. We have representatives that listen to us. We have 100 other commissioner groups that, that deal with our state legislature. And we need to prevail upon our state legislature to meet, to do things on, within the Constitution. We're probably going to have to have a constitutional amendment where the governor can no longer call the state legislature in session. They can call themselves in session. That's what's going to have to happen. Am I right, Hood? Because what we had this summer was the governor acting with the, with, with, uh, the Attorney General Josh Stein in such a way to agree with every lawsuit and the sue settled, uh, pan, uh, uh, group of lawsuits that came before North Carolina. One of them, they got, they tried, they, they agreed to in a, in a lower court, and thankfully, uh, it was appealed by interested parties with the General Assembly, and it was overturned in a higher court, in a federal court, because it was unconstitutional. Because the General Assembly is the one that has to be, they have to have standing in every lawsuit brought against the state of North Carolina. And if you can't even bring them back in session, how do they have standing? Think about it. We've got problems with the way we do things here in North Carolina, and that needs to be remedied. And we have to prevail upon our General Assembly to make these changes, or we're going to have a state, it's going to look like Georgia, or Nevada, or Wisconsin. You would, you would. You would. You, you believe in, you believe in elections where you don't really get the votes. There's no way. COVID Joe got 80 million votes.
Have you made a motion yet? Am I missing?
I'm going to leave it to one of these guys to make the resol, make, make the motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move the resolution.
All right, is there a sound?
I'll say.
All right, there's a.
Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in.
Whoa, whoa.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
Okay.
Kill it then.
Kill it then.
Kill that Ed.
The Democrats killed it. Most of the junk. Okay.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
God, we met dinner right there.